I call the Select Board, Reading Select Board Meeting of May 14th, 2018 to order. I'm Barry Berman, Acting Chair of the Select Board. I want to quickly go over the agenda tonight. Mr. Friedman is going to be a little bit late, so we're just, we're going to get going. We're going to first start off with liaison reports and public comment, followed by the Town Manager's Report, and then we're, we're going to go into the proclamations, Police Week proclamations and Public Works Proclamations, and then a firepad, firefighter badge penning. Sorry, I've been fighting a really bad cold. We're then going to jump back to number two, which opened session for topics not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours, where basically I had asked Bob to send out a, as you all got, recommendations for what you guys wanted for liaison, and then I made my nominations and we'll discuss that, and then jump back into the rest of the agenda where we'll talk about the Town Manager's Contract, Select Board Policy Article One, which specifically is going to deal with communications, and then the Economic Development Project Communication, which we had talked about, I think, a couple of meetings ago, where we're going to discuss sort of the Select Board members' roles in some of the economic development as community liaisons. And then we have minutes, and then we're going to go into Executive Session, where we're going to discuss two issues, one relative to collective bargaining, and then discuss strategy with respect to interest in real estate. So, nothing else further ado, why don't I start off, why don't I start off to my left this time with liaison reports?
Sure. So, ZBAM met on May 2nd to discuss the Eaton Lake New Project. The developer has said that they're going to consider reducing the size and height of the development. Further discussions will take place on July 18th. There's also a traffic study that will get underway quickly if it hasn't already in order to take into consideration school year traffic as opposed to waiting until later in the summer when that data won't be available. They're asking for the peer review study to be completed by June 28th so that they're available with time to review for that July 18th meeting. At the CPDC meeting on May 7th, there were minor modifications to development at 306 Main Street, to the site plan, and they're also-
Vanessa, which development is that?
306 Main.
Yeah, that's the, some do office bill-
Sanoco?
Sanoco.
Sanoco, maybe? 306?
No.
306.
All right, all right.
And they're also reviewing their guiding principles regarding design guidelines, specifically regarding compatibility, and there's going to be additional conversations of that nature.
So, a question I have for that, Vanessa, I think last, it might have been a year ago, maybe, Bob, remind me, maybe a little bit more, we actually met with CPDC jointly to kind of talk about kind of design guidelines and sort of neighborhood impacts on the stuff. Is that something that folks would think might be useful to have again, or is it too early, or did they talk about-
The Select Board itself wasn't discussed in this. It seems like it's, they're still in the preliminary stages, so I can suggest if they want to have a discussion with us, that we're open to that when they're ready for it.
We did that, I think we did that last time.
We've done it a couple of times. Most recently, that I remember was at Parker Middle School.
Oh, was it that long ago?
I don't remember one since.
Oh, oh, when we did it there, okay.
At Parker.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, but we talked, but it was sort of a-
Like a year and a half ago.
Design guidelines. All right, I just sort of, I mean, I know that when we met Detroitly together, it's been very fruitful.
Yeah, I let Jean know, because one of you mentioned that a meeting or two ago, and she said, basically, they're very busy, but-
I know, yeah.
You're going to have to add a meeting. They can't add you to their-
No, I know, I know. Well, I mean, just something-
You can invite them here, you can add a meeting.
That's all, thanks.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my capacity as one of the MBTA Advisory Board Members, or one of the five that can be an Advisory Board, I guess, I visited the Keolis Commuter Rail Maintenance Facility in Somerville today. This is the, Keolis operates the MBTA commuter rail system, better known as the Purple Line, both north and south of Boston. They have an eight-year contract with renewal options. They're the fifth largest commuter rail operation in North America, 14 lines covering 394 route miles, serving 137 stations. They do not operate the subways or buses, but they have complete dominion over the commuter rail, including the hiring of staff, the maintenance and repair of locomodes and coaches, which is what this facility is designed to do, maintenance and repair of track stations and other infrastructure, and implementing its snow plan for significant weather events. This is, shows you a locomotive with a, I think that's a 20-ton capacity gantry crane that can actually lift that locomotive up and put the motors back under it. For those who don't know, the, hold on there, that's a, the diesel engine, I think they tore the locomotive carriage completely apart there. The diesel actually produces electricity, does not directly operate the wheels. The wheels are actually electric, large electric motors, lots of amps, and the diesels run the motors, basically. So, you're riding electric trains, one way or the other. You see, there's like a little roundabout there, that's how they turn the wheel units around and fit them back under the trains as they lift them. There's a walk under bay where minor repairs can be done. This is a pretty impressive set of jacks that can completely lift up a commuter rail car and to allow work underneath. And there's another walk under pit for one of the engine bays. Look at the backyard. This is the big blue building you see coming out on the commuter rail on the left, about 11 o'clock, about the north station. They actually service trains from both the south station and north. The south station's train have to make a circuitous route through, I think they're called, the connection in Worcester, and then they hop on the other track lines. It's a little more roundabout because that particular junction is closed right now. This is one of the newer trains. These engines are maintained, when they come in for overhaul, it takes about two days. They reduce that down from four or five days for the older models. This is one of the 2020 series, much more fuel efficient. That's one of the snowplow blades. They're not that big. They have some super huge ones, but most of the trains just carry plow blades of that size. And there's one of the diesel engines up close, so.
Do you have a picture of yourself on a train, right there?
No, I didn't get that.
It's good to have them. Do you have a little hard hat there?
I got the hard hat, yeah, I look like it. I was a total railroad mo for a day. Here's one of the towing units. It's kind of like a Harbor Master, doesn't let the captain drive the ship. They shut the engine off and use this to push it into the garage for maintenance. They can actually pull a full train in for minor maintenance and actually do every other day. There's like three football field length building on the end there where they do that. So, that's a quick turnaround. To keep the wheels true, this is a, essentially a big lathe that they use on the wheels, and they also try to train the conductors not to both brake and accelerate. That actually was the old way of braking, where they would hit both, but that tends to put a lot of thermal stress on the wheels. Making the wheels last is both training and good maintenance. And here's the maintenance bay for the big double-decker cars that you see. Very interesting, and I want to give a shout out to Justin Thompson, who's the PR manager for Caboless Commuter Services for that fine tour. Okay, second item, Board of Health. Just met this evening. It was reported that H4479 has passed the House. That raises the tobacco purchase age to 21. Senate action is anticipated shortly. It's also reported that it's already ticked the mosquito season, so everybody should be taking preventative measures, wearing long sleeve garments if you're out in the woods, certainly to protect against the ticks, wearing appropriate repellents. Lyme disease is prevalent again. It's, it's coming out early this year. Regarding the pesticide regulations, that is in semifinal form. It was discussed this evening. The Board will meet again on June 12th to finalize the language that they're going to be presenting to the Board in our meeting on the 19th of June. There's some final language on enforcement and how enforcement is done and fine levels that they want to propose, plus implementation dates, so a little more fine tuning on that. They'll be meeting with us. Regarding Reading Village, the health agent reported that the developer is conforming to all DEP sampling requirements and implementing DEP risk reduction measures as directed. Final item is the VASC. Barry and I have been going back and forth on planning our series of interviews. I have distributed a set of the dates, I won't read them all here, but our intention for the benefit of the new Board members who may be serving on the VASC in the future, and the old Board members who might be serving, is to schedule one of those as a full-blown Selectment's meeting, posted as such, so that you can feel free to attend. So, I'd ask you to get back to us with, and there's a couple Tuesdays on there that might be better than some of the others.
Did you send those out to us?
I just sent it this evening.
Oh, this, okay, I have a chance to do that.
The dates. I also sent a list of the Boards, Commissions, Committees, is one or two things I need to still change on that, that's not quite right. And you've also got a list of all the posted openings that I sent out this evening, there's quite a few, lots and lots of openings, folks, so keep. Have we, have you talked to Matt about how to give you a digest?
No, not yet.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's probably between people we have to reappoint and openings is like close to probably 100 people?
A lot, yep. It's, yeah, it's in that vicinity.
And that includes associate members that we could definitely appoint?
Including associates, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, one of the things we want to do, I mean, it's a, you know, 100 people to raise their hands and say, I volunteer for the town, is to really advertise it as much as possible. Bob, I have not had a chance to talk to Matt. I know maybe, have you, maybe, like, really just pushed this out, newspaper?
Yeah, it's already gone out. I'm just looking to see on the website where it is, which-
Website, but maybe also on our Facebook page?
Is there anything that exists, like a one-page digest that has like a synopsis of what the Board does, and then openings?
Per Board now.
Yeah, it's like one document that has everything.
There's a one document summarizes all the openings, but there's not a one document per page. There's a webpage for every Board.
Yeah, that, it would be nice to have it all in place if we have staff time to put it together.
I can, I can, I've just been sick, so.
Yeah, I got time to help too.
Yeah, just to really pump it out there, I mean-
Yeah, count me in.
I think there's a, I think there's a lot of folks that kind of got involved and engaged and want to stay engaged, and there's all these different opportunities that people may not even know about, so, and we'd like to fill as many of them as we can, so.
Very good. That's it.
John? I have two brief things. One, we'll go from trains and planes and committees.
And things that go. Hey, I'm reading that to my grandson.
Pickleball. We, I've actually been meeting and corresponding over some period of time with a group that has really, has maybe close to 100 people that play on a regular basis, and we've got some limitations as to space. And, so, the long story short is that there was some concerns kind of back and forth between the Recreation Committee, and maybe was it a DPW issue, to paint an extra set of stripes on, on one of the tennis courts, not in the newer ones, but in one of the parks. And, and so, Recreation felt like, because it was maintenance, maybe I should talk to DPW, I did speak to them, they said they would be happy to do this, but Recreation had to, you know, approve it for use. So, the long story short, we've got some expansion to the pickleball courts, and we'll see how that works out as it coexists with the, with a slightly used tennis court.
What's a pickleball court?
Pickleball is a very popular, very gaining popularity sport. It tends to be played probably by, I would guess, people 50 and older. It's a little less strenuous than, you know, it's a tennis type of game.
Like a cross between ping pong and tennis?
Yeah, it's, but it's very popular, and I think they play a couple of nights, you know, like a night and a weekend, and they have 50, 60 people at every one of these things, and there's over 100 of them that play on a regular basis. There you go. And I, currently, there is a non-regulation size over at, by, behind the tennis courts at Birch Meadow, kind of between, you know, next to the Little League Field. But it doesn't have a fence, and it's not regulation size, and it's a lot tougher to play, especially as it's gained in popularity. So, I think that between tennis and recreation, they came up with a good solution, and, you know, we're going to see how it coexists with, with the tennis usage. It's a, it's a lesser-used tennis court, so, so that's going on. The other thing I'd like to bring up, just to put it kind of on the table, we have, I got, I've gotten several calls over the course of the last several days from some neighbors about our tree lawn policy. They didn't know it was our policy when they called me, but it turns out to be our policy. So, there are two residents that, whose tree lawns were paved for 25 to 40 years, and they, you know, in a place where they could not really park very well. I mean, obviously, they stay off the street in the wintertime. But we have a policy, which is very old, this will be a shock to everybody here, that says, you can't pave it. And so, because some work was done in the street, it came to our attention, DPW is doing their job, following the Selectment's policy. We've got a couple of residents that you'll be hearing from, asking for an exception to have-
So, they want to unpave it?
This on Linden?
No, it's on Park. It's been, it's been paved-
Forever?
One of them for 25 years.
It's almost grandfathered.
The other one for 40 years. And because there was some work done down there-
Oh, I see.
They got unpaved for the work to be done. Then they got repaved, and today, they got unpaved again.
Oh, boy.
Government hard at work.
So, so did the rest of us?
And, you know, it really ties back, frankly, to a policy, you know, I think we've got to be, look at this policy, and I've just put it out there for, so that we can get it on our agenda. I know it's not there tonight.
Yeah, you know what, I'll have a quiet, but we'll just tell them, you know.
Yeah, I mean-
No, it's okay.
It's got to get on the agenda. It's one of those policies that needs to be looked at along with many, many others that, you know, some we pay attention to and some we don't, but, you know, our DPW guys were doing their job, and the neighbors were not happy, and I understand that because they've had an experience of 25 to 40 years of having their yard a certain way, and now it's not, so.
Barry, if I might, just as I explained to John, this is one of your policies in which there's going to be opinions on both sides, even on the same street. That was the situation on Park. Some liked it, some didn't like it, so it's not always easy answers. I agree with John generally that, you know, there are some Selectment's policy that you just scratch your head and say, why? This is one of them, a cul-de-sac. Why can't someone pave in front of their yard, why do they have to put in a tree lawn, when there's no sidewalk to begin with?
There is no sidewalk at this place, and there, it's a dead-end street.
It's not like the gap between the sidewalk and the street is falling out for a tree lawn. There isn't such a thing.
And, you know, there is an exception policy. And I have suggested to them that they write to all of us, which is the policy that we would follow, to request an exception, which, you know, they'll be in to see us, and maybe we can look at that exception, and they're going to ask for an exception and a repave. So, I just kind of want to put it out there, so we don't let it get lost in the shuffle of agendas and so forth.
Anything else to?
That's it.
All right, so Andy actually sent me a couple of liaison reports, I'm going to read real quick, just so that we can get them out of the way, and when he gets back, we don't have to stop what we're doing. Climate Advisory Committee Bicycle Recycling and Giveaway was held on May 4th and 5th with another great success, 10th year of the event. He attended the School Committee Administration Application for Extraordinary Relief Under the Circuit Breaker Program was accepted. Oh, it's great, they gave him some money. $154,000 coming back. It's money to be spent in FY18 to offset the cost in special ed and tuition transportation.
Oh, that's circuitry.
Yeah. None of that was money they were applying for. They announced two appointments. They hired a new high school principal, Kathleen Boynton, from more than 40 that was selected. I think she was the assistant principal in Bedford. And then they hired a STEM coordinator, Heather Leonard, who I think is the principal over at Barrows, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, but that was a position that was made possible by the override. She's currently the principal in Barrows. They've obviously started a new CIRC, they already have 15 applications in, and the School Committee heard a quarterly FY18 budget update from Gail. They have $264,000 remaining in their total budget, normal projection number for this time of year. Nothing unusual there. So, those Randys liaison reports, I'm going to do mine really quickly. So, there's, well, first of all, I just wanted to let everybody know that next, our next meeting, June 4th, I will actually not be here. I'm going to turn the gavels, all three of them, over to Dan. It's my son, this is, he's graduating from high school grade next week, and they're doing an honorary dinner, so we're going to be up there for that. So, a few things really quickly, and I meant to mention this last time, but we got a letter from the Mass Historical Board that, longtime Reading Historical Associate, member of Virginia Adams, was honored for being a 40-year member. And basically, she was given the honor, the honor of Volunteer of the Year throughout the whole entire state. So, we know what a gem Virginia does here. I mean, you need to know anything about happening in this town, she's got it at her fingertips. And so, I think it was really nice that they acknowledged that, and I want to let everybody here know that, you know, out of all the historical boards across the Commonwealth, Virginia was given that honor, so I just wanted to give her a shout out.
Great. Sounds like that calls for proclamation from us?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea, John. So, I have the letter, so we can kind of work that out and have her come in here and accept it, so. Also, you all probably got emails from Kevin Bo Miller, our Veterans Agent, inviting us all to Memorial Day. It's a really, really special event in Reading with a parade and some really solemn ceremonies at all four of our town cemeteries. I know I've heard from Andy and from Vanessa, I don't know, are you guys going to be around?
I'm going to be out of town.
You're going to be out of town, Dan, are you around?
I'm if you are now, depending on the birth of a child.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so essentially, what we'll do, so, you know, we do, we do the ceremonies at each of the four things, so between the three of us, well, one of us will do double duty. And Vanessa, you get to march in a parade.
Very exciting.
You get to wear comfortable shoes.
Yeah.
I also sent out an email about vacation schedules. I got it back. Bob, do people get back to you?
I don't have anything fixed right now.
Okay.
That was easy.
So, in terms of our, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we don't, you know, if folks aren't going to be away, maybe we can juggle our summer schedule, but right now, it doesn't seem like we haven't, we have to do that yet, or?
Yeah, no, it looks, it looks like you're fine. You're going to have four at every meeting that I know of. Andy did have a request, and it made sense, the future goals discussion got moved to a four-board meeting, which I've done.
Okay, all right, so that's good. Obviously, if anything comes up, let us all know, because we're going to have to juggle around some things. One thing real quick, the Garden Club is having their annual plant sale at Town Common this Saturday. I don't know if anybody's gone before, but they have the most incredible plants, vegetables, pollinator plants, all kinds of things for your gardens. A lot of them are that they buy, but also, a lot of them are kind of the special cuttings that the Garden Club members do themselves, that they offer for sale. These are like known winners, that they've been cultivating their own gardens for years. I'm told if you don't, I think it starts at like 8:00 or 9:00. I'm told if you don't, I'm told if you don't get there quick, all the really good stuff goes, and it's really good prices, and it supports all the efforts of the Garden Club. And all you have to do is walk around here, town, anywhere, any island, anything, the Garden Club just beautifies this town incredibly. So, this Saturday, and I think it's rain or shine, so, you know, get there early. And the last thing I want to talk about is, we all had sort of heard about it, on May 23rd, I think it's a Thursday night at 6:00 PM at the Scatini Library, the schools are sponsoring a school security summit, and it's going to be presentations by Dr. Doherty and Chief Segala about some of the efforts that, you know, we're doing with school security, God bless. Obviously, a lot of things can't be talked about, but it's an open meeting, and people are free to ask questions. It's, I think, from 6:00 to 7:00. It's scheduled early because there's some conflicts at the middle school, there's some events at 7:00 o'clock. But I think it's, it's really an opportunity for folks to come and find out about some of the school security measures that are either in place or maybe being planned. So, I would encourage folks who are interested to come to that. So, that's all my reports. Andrew, I gave yours already, so-
Thank you.
We're all set.
Appreciate it.
So, now I'll turn it over to public comment. Mr. Brown, I always look in that direction.
Thank you. I don't mind. Thank you, Bill. Go around playing, after all. We have some openings on the Senate Board of Trustees.
Yes.
Not in the deciding board, but we try our best. The other thing, too, I think the new regulations will have been published, they will be out, and they will be enforced as of July 1st, so you might be hearing a lot of flack over some of the stuff that's going to be announced. Primarily, to summarize it quickly, we're limiting what, and how much we put on any grave site. And number one, it's the safety, and number two is, we just don't have the manpower. Even though we, I think right now, we've got five and a half people at lunchroom, one's on separate software. And when I look back over the records, that's exactly the same we did in 1978 with two cemeteries. So, not being me, we just want to make the cemeteries look as nice as they can, and everybody has an equal, you know, opportunity.
And you guys do a great job over there, especially around Memorial Day, which is coming up.
I honestly don't know how they do it, but they do.
Bill, I actually, I'm glad you came and brought that up, because I was approached by somebody at a meeting, I think last week, who wanted to volunteer. Not so much necessarily be on the committee, but I guess this person walks a lot through town and go, you know, walks through the cemetery, notices that there's been a lot of tree damage and things in the cemetery, and he's offered to help either with planting new trees or, or just any kind of beautification and-
I think, if you want to take that up with Jeff, I don't think that we have much to do with that, but we just would, yeah.
All right, so, Jeff, would you mind if I connected the two of you?
Sure. But if they're interested, Barry, tell them, come and know our meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we drive them guys.
Okay. All right, great.
And we don't, we're buried.
I knew that was dumb.
Stephen Crook, member of the RCQB Board of Directors. One, our annual meeting is coming up, this next, a week from Thursday, May 24th. Wanted to invite the Board of Selectment, also any town staff or any other boards or committees who want to come. It's Thursday, the 24th of May, 6:00 PM, at RCQB Studios on 57 Main Street.
Food and goodies, or?
Food and goodies, yes. Of course.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Peter Kramer, Franklin Street. I have some questions for the Board. I'd like to look in over the summer, from the plowing of the snow in the public lot behind CBS. Town seems to be wasting an extreme amount of money back there. This comes from, I took care of the Charles's Building for 29 years. This is not a spur of the moment thing. If you look at the plan, that's the lot behind CBS. Number one is the Reading Cooperative Lot. They push their snow onto town property, year after year after year. They're pushing into the number five, that's where the town pushes snow. Number two is the dental, the Seals Island Building. Town literally goes in and cleans the snow out of there, then puts it into the lot, into the pile five. Number three, I think, is the awards store there. Town literally goes in there and pulls the snow out of there and pushes it over. The number four belongs to, I believe, the Lynch Properties. All of these, number six is the Charles's. I don't know where that snow goes, because I haven't done it for probably eight years now, but the town hauls the snow, plows the snow for free. Now, this goes back, as far as I know, about 40 years. I don't think the town of Reading tax base should be supporting the merchants. Snow removal is a very expensive proposition, as we all know. I think this election should look into this. Also, the clearing of sidewalks. No town around here clears their downtowns, none. You waste a lot of money cleaning the snow.
Are you suggesting that we don't clear the sidewalks, so that people can't get into stores?
Merchants shouldn't clear the sidewalks. Every other town, Mr. Chairman, every other town, merchants are responsible. We can haul the snow later on, but the merchants should be responsible. All they should get is one snow blower passed, as everybody else does on the school roof. That's it. We spend exorbitant amount of money cleaning those sidewalks, when there's nobody shopping. Nobody shops in the snowstorm. And I've clowned Charleses for twenty-nine years, so this is not an idle field stopping by. So I think we should look at this, take care of our nickels and dimes, and then the dollars will come into play.
Okay.
But I think you really should, there's a serious amount of money here. All this snow could go up to a thousand dollars an hour, and we do it for free. Alright, Sir?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Bob, are you ready?
Three quick things. First, this Saturday, I can't attend. I was invited, and I invite the board. The residents at Pearl Street is having a reconnect with old friends and colleagues from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. I have information, if anyone can make that on the town. Also, on, let's see, last night, I went to Redding Cultural Council Awards reception along with Senator Lewis and Lisa Simmons from the Mass Cultural Council. We spoke, and it was a very nice turnout. The Redding Cultural Council, on behalf of the Massachusetts Cultural Council, gave out a number of grants, small grants to many organizations in town. And as Senator Lewis and I both noticed, a few years back, you recall that Jesse Wilson started a downtown cultural district exploration, I guess I'll say? And that's turned into, and I always get it wrong, so it's either arts Redding or Redding Arts.
It's arts Redding. And I actually went to one of their meetings.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
It's unbelievable, if you think about how many arts organizations and cultural organizations there are in town with hundreds of people.
That's what we did in the early days, is we all knew something, and we put our thoughts together, and it was, honestly, it was shocking how much is in this town. And as the presentations went on last night, and I had made that remark upfront, Senator Lewis said, "I can't believe," I mean, I know you said it, but it's unbelievable, "the diversification and amount of events that this town supports is phenomenal." You know, the one missing item for everyone is a central location, if we could share.
Right.
And Wakefield has found a building to do that with. We've never found a building.
They have the Albion Center.
As, yeah, exactly. As the board, as some of the board members know, we've met an executive session in the past and looked at post offices, whether that would support it, and the price was just way beyond our means. And that's, you know, something I encouraged Jason last night, I said, "Go find us some money, we'll find the building."
Right.
But a shout out to the cultural groups in town. They somewhat do fly a little low in the radar. Many residents know certain ones of them, but they don't understand the whole picture and how large it is.
And they don't, they're only starting now to work with each other.
Yes.
And I think one of the, one of the things that they kind of do to sort of kind of their introductory sort of events, is, I think in October, sort of a cultural, I botched it, but, you know, some kind, they're gonna do an event in October.
Right, they have, yeah.
To display all the work.
It's the fifteenth.
All the work of all the different groups. And, you know, which is great, because, you know, in the next few years, we're gonna have, you know, the downtown is gonna, is gonna be built up, there's gonna be people living down there, going out to eat, looking for some things to do, you know. Art and culture are, bring vibrancy. If we can kind of knit all that together and make it part of our economic development policy, then I think we're on the right track. And we have some good.
And that was our initial plan, and that's absolutely Secretary Asher's plan, is it does bring economic development, it goes hand in hand. And, you know, there was a shout out to some local businesses also, which I won't remember them all, but some of the businesses are very good about sponsoring nights for the art and cultural artists to display some of their work. So I think this is something the board's gonna hear more about.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna jump into proclamations.
Why did you do that first? You wanted the badge pinning? Got a lot of folks.
You know what, actually, that's a really good idea, Dan, let's do that. So they're all out there enjoying themselves. Let's get it done before there's a fire.
No bagpipes tonight, I guess.
Okay. Darn it. They're afraid of the tornado. Fire. Fire first, chief.
Joe, thanks for having us here tonight. And I'd like to say congratulations and thank you to the Redding Police for Redding Police Week. They do a fantastic job, and I work with them each and every day, and I'd just like to say, for all the hard work you do throughout the year.
Thank you, sir. I actually thought you were here for us, 'cause I didn't know it was a bad.
The Assistant Chief set this up to support you, so.
He told me that they were there for you.
So tonight, we have a promotion to announce, and we have two new vibrants. And tonight first, I'd like to do Captain Garrett, Agent Avica. Captain Agent Avica has been with us for eleven years, and he was, he was acting lieutenant for about eleven months, and he had a captain retired. So he, we had to have a civil service exam, and we were admitted to final promotion. But Garrett spent a considerable amount of his time taking courses to improve himself on command, leadership. He's a firefighter, one and two certified, fire officer, one and two certified. He's taken a number of command classes at the National Fire Academy. I just recently took the two-week program in managing officer. He's taken a number of, from the Massachusetts Fire Academy. He has a master's in public administration, he has a bachelor's degree in fire science at the Illinois College. He's a licensed paramedic, and he's been working in the EMS field since 2003. He also spent a lot of time running our EMS programs and training. He's been doing a fantastic job as captain on Group Two. Both myself and the Assistant Chief couldn't be happier with his performance, so we're very fortunate that he happens. I'd like to say congratulations to you.
Thanks, chief.
For doing a great job. Tonight, Garrett's wife is gonna be here.
If I could just make a comment on the promotion process. I want to tip my cap to Chief Jackson and Chief Burns for coming up, especially with an exercise that no one could have studied for. It was something that was very obscure, but could be very practical. And I was privileged to see what it's like for people to think on their feet. And every single candidate did an excellent job. It was really very impressive, so thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to introduce to you Chris Smith. Chris has been with us, he started in January, we sent him to the academy when it was really cold. He enjoyed that program. Chris spent six years, did you spend six years with Bokwar?
I guess so.
Yep. I thought I had. Chris spent six years with Bokwar, handled a service from Gloucester, and four years with Trinity, and outside of Rhode. He's EMT certified, and he's also attended North Shore Community College. He got his paramedic certification in 2007. Chris served in the Army National Guard in 2000 to 2008. And he received the Distinguished Soldier of the Year Award, was a service in Bravo Unit in the first 182th.
Excellent.
So I'd like to say congratulations to you. So he's been through our in-house training program, we do a two-week day program, and then we have a several-month program where he's paired up with senior firefighters. We were getting into the beginning of the competition. Do you like him? Do you like him?
Good voice, Chris.
Chris, welcome to Redding.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, man.
Congratulations, David.
And I'd like to introduce you to Nick DeRoe. Nick and Chris died the same day, went to the same cold academy class, and so he's out fully trained, went through the same training program. Nick has been in the EMS field for twenty-five years, and that's one of the things that stuck with him, his knowledge. Nick was a paramedic shift commander for eight years from the paramedic program at Lawrence General Hospital, I'm sorry, Lawrence General Hospital, very business system. Nick also has sixteen years' experience with American Medical Response. He's been an EMT since 1992, and he attended Illinois Massachusetts Community College, and received his paramedic certification from the Williams EMS Institute in 1997. He received a scholarship award for academic achievement. Congratulations, if you'd like to have him. Nick, who's gonna be the honor?
Thank you, chief.
Your words, chief.
Thank you.
I want to thank the board for allowing us up here as well tonight. 1962, President Kennedy declared May 15th as peace officers until Memorial Day, in recognition of all the police officers killed in the line of duty. And again, it's very fitting to be here on May 15th this year specifically, so thank you for having us up here tonight for proclamation.
I'd just like to say, the open house was spectacular again this year. I know I was down there all morning long with the customer identification program going on. I think eighty-three families came through and took care of that, and despite the fact that it was kind of nasty weather, big turnout, and it was always a great job.
Wasn't for all these people here, I wouldn't be able to do it, so it's because of these people, we're able to do it. But no, thank you very much.
Okay, time for the proclamation. Move that the Select Board proclaim May 13th through May 19th is Police Week here in Redding, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require the police, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas, the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Redding Public Safety Communication Center, and whereas, Redding police officers are a crucial contact point between our citizens and emergency services, and whereas, May 15th is National Police Officers Memorial Day, honoring those men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas, police officers of the Redding Police Department have contributed substantially to the prevention of crime and the apprehension of criminals, and play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Redding citizens, and whereas, members of the Redding Police Department exhibit compassion, understanding, and the highest standards of professionalism in the performance of their jobs. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Redding, Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim the week, May 13th to May 19th, 2018, is National Police Week in the Town of Redding, in honor of the men and women whose dedication and professionalism keep our town and citizens safe.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor?
Should we award it?
Yeah, so. Chief, you want to, maybe we'll just come?
Yep.
You know, he wants to go around this way, or?
Well, that's what they believe.
Yeah.
Look, I'm sure you want us in picture.
Want to step back? Are we all going up?
Yeah.
Just there. We going around?
Are we all coming around?
It's gonna be a big crowd.
Yeah, that'll work. Don't block the shot this time.
Good, Al?
Yep.
Sure?
First time, every time out.
Hey, guys, great job this week, guys.
You worked, chief.
Thank you. You were really busy, and maybe we appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
I hope not.
I better run up for you, Karen.
Okay, I think we have one more, too, for?
On it, Al. All word, ho. Uniform personnel, present, humps. Order, humps.
Speaking of grades.
Thank you, everybody. I just, I just want to say, you know, as they're leaving, we're just really, truly blessed, both our fire department and our police department, for what they do. They have to handle some really tricky situations. I mean, just this week, a shelter in place with, you know, what turned out to be thankfully nothing, but, you know, could have been something that, could have been a catastrophe. These guys were Johnny on the spot, in control, and also, we read of, you know, of a major narcotics arrest here in town. These guys are on the wall, and, you know, we went through the override, we knew how stressed and what they drew, and I'm glad it helps on the way, and we're really blessed to have these guys, so. Dan, you wanna?
Sure.
Help our, you know, honor our other, our other guys?
I'm gonna honor the people who are the unsung heroes and for whom a Friends group still does not exist, and I say that every year.
We call ourselves the third arm of public safety.
Third arm, the third arm, indeed.
And actually, you know, and that's true, the gas, the gas situation, you guys are out there with police, with fire.
Oh, yeah.
Together, so we're really lucky.
Move that the Select Board proclaim May 20th through May 26th is Public Works Week here in Redding, and the proclamation reads, whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral but often unnoticed part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas, the support of understanding and informed residents is vital to the efficient operation of public works programs such as sewers, water, streets, highways, parks, and forestry, and solid waste collection, and whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of residents, this community, of the residents of this community depends on these facilities and services, and whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these services is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials and employees, and whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff our Public Works Department is materially influenced by the residents' attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Redding, Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to May 19th.
And I think that those of us that are closest to it realize that it's, you guys do more than what's expected, in my opinion. You always go out of your way and I think that it's nice that we have this proclamation, but it's a good idea to say thanks out loud to you as the leader of the organization. And please pass that along to all the people that work for you.
I appreciate it, John. You know, it's the guys in the trenches. I mean, the other guys have been good. You guys are good at it and you make.
Well, on any given day, they get yelled at more than they get praised, but they really, and that's because, you know, somebody's having a thing that day, you know, but they do such a good job across the board.
You know, a good example, I mean, you know, here are three water awards we got this year. I think it was something on the paper that talked about. We had one, as just operations in general for the water department, one as far as a lead program at the schools, testing and remediation. And the other one is to a specific operator, Ericus Livy, who's a water supply coordinator. He gets a separate award based on his activities within the, from DEP, working with them. I mean, we went to this, the award ceremony at the State Office and there were like fifty communities there and on the way out, a couple of communities mentioned to me that, you know, maybe sometime Redding could take their foot off the gas a little bit and get somebody else a chance. We had awards in three separate categories, which was the only community that did that. So, and again, it's the guys, it's dedication, and again, it's, it's, it's the guys in the trenches. They do a great job and I just publicly like to thank them.
Well, you know, you hear anecdotally, year-round, you know, somebody will say, wow, something, you know, I was having a problem, you know, in front of my house with the snow and, you know, I mean, I get that not everything goes perfect all the time, but we hear a lot of really good feedback. I know that's true throughout recreation, the cooperation that goes on with your department and, you know, with all, I mean, how many users are we talking about?
It's everybody in the town.
It really is. I mean, you guys really touch everybody in the top of Redding and it's, I'm glad we stop at least once a year and really say thank you publicly.
Okay.
I agree with all you said, obviously. And one of the interesting things that came out during the last sort of two years of override discussion was there was a lot of misunderstanding or lack of information in the general public that thought DPW was really large. So they would say things like, hey, you know, during a snowstorm, why can't your order in the water department help sometimes? Well, everybody plows snow. The water department, the sewer department, the highway department, everybody.
That's if it doesn't water main, they turn the snow.
Well, then they go do that. This department, there was a hundred and twenty people twenty-five years ago and now they're in the forties. Obviously, equipment helps, but there's a lot of work in this town. There's a lot more town now than there was twenty, twenty-five years ago. And they really do do an outstanding job. And the thing that I'm proudest of is how these three departments and every department work together so well. That's the thing that you don't see in other communities. Some communities win awards, not as many as Redding, but very few communities work this well together. So when there's a scene, all of a sudden, you're not introducing yourselves, you've already worked together, you've already practiced what you're probably saying. So thank you, John.
So opposed.
Done. Jeff, thank you very much. There you go.
Thank the guys for us, really.
Thank you.
Jeff, look.
Ah, come on.
Come on.
Yeah.
You know, when Al takes the picture, right, and people say, oh, that's damn DPW.
You're an apple, obviously. You can call me on that one.
At some point, the camera's going to break.
Okay. All right, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. I don't know, John. I don't know.
I'll tell you, the best part of this job is saying thank you.
And it goes a long way.
Get rid of this.
There'll be three departments tomorrow that'll hear about what happened tonight. If they're not already watching, they'll be very proud.
Okay, so, we're going to kind of jump right back into topic two. Late last week, I thought it was a really good idea since we didn't have, actually, we had, I think, two or three meetings before we had everybody here, given the schedules and vacations and things like that. We did some changing of some liaison and I just thought, you know, let's just take a look at the whole liaison assignments now and let's just get, just redo it for the year. So Bob had sent out an email, I think it asked everybody in our usual way to kind of put in, you know, what you would like to do, what you don't like to want to do, what, you know, what you're kind of in the middle of. And so everybody got stuff back and as, in my role of chair, I made nominations, which I believe you just guys just saw tonight. So I did complete it last night and sent it over to Bob. Andy, you should know that when I made my nominations, I had not gotten yours yet. So the purpose here is to kind of have, take a look at it, make sure everybody's satisfied. If anybody wants to do a little horse trading, I'm open to that. But let me, let me give you some of my, let me give you some of my thinking and some of this. You'll notice that there have been, there are liaisons or boards and committees or commissions that maybe traditionally have maybe had one member sort of serving. I've actually, I've actually sort of increased, there they go. To work.
It's what was handed out tonight. Five fourteen.
So what I did was, I, I did.
That's his picks.
What I did was, I kind of doubled on some of the ones that maybe traditionally have had one person. And the idea being is that, I think part of our role as members of the Select Board is to try to attend as many meetings, try to get out there as much as we can. And sometimes with the schedule, it's really, really hard if there's only one of us and you've been already at three meetings, now you've got to go to one and you can't do it. So if we have two on some of the more major ones, bigger ones, things that have a lot of meetings, it's easier to cover. So you'll notice somewhere it says Chair nominations, I have like a first name and a second name. It's not like that's a lead and then a second one. It's basically two equal people. And what I'm hoping for is that the people who are involved in both of these as liaisons, that you guys will figure out a way to work together. I'll go to this meeting, you go to that meeting, I can't make it, what did you learn, what are you hearing, so that we really have more eyes and ears and feet on the ground. So that's why you'll see that there's two. And so what I tried to do is try to accommodate as many people's first choices as possible. John, you had, I think, like twelve number ones. I don't know if you wanted to be on twelve different committees.
What does the asterisk mean under?
Those were his highest choices.
Oh, I didn't even know that. I never even noticed that.
He emphasized three of them.
Oh, I didn't even see that. So, I missed that on the spreadsheet. Well, I think, John, you got them, right? At any rate, so this is my nomination, you know, my nomination. And some of the thinking that I put into this is that, a couple of different things. One is that there are some boards that folks have been staffing for a long time. I just thought, well, maybe, you know, let's mix it up a little bit. There's other things where people haven't been working together, you know, we're a new board. So I wanted to kind of match people together who might not have worked together. The idea here is, is that we're going to work our best together, you know, to staff these committees and these boards as much as possible. So this was my best judgment in terms of what I think could serve us best. Again, you have just seen it for the first time. If, you know, somebody like raises their hand right now and says, I absolutely do not want to, you know, feel free to ask a colleague to switch out. But this is, this is again, I put a lot of thinking into this over pretty much a twenty-four hour period. And it's my judgment on sort of how we all work together to staff these committees.
Just to be clear, this is for the, starting July first, for the next fiscal year?
No, I'm, I'm.
Right now. Oh, just through the end of the?
No, no.
We've been in these jobs for a year.
Right.
So it's.
Oh, starting now.
Starting now and we'll do it till next year and, you know, because we did this, I think, when we reorganized back in the beginning of last April.
So through the next reorganization.
So this will be starting now, going forward, and then.
And the next chairman will do it a year.
And then, you know, figure out when the next time, the best time to do it is. So that we can, because this is really the first time we're talking about this when all five of us are together. So I just wanted to get it done. I wanted, I wanted to get us working as, you know, both out there in the individual committees, but also together, so.
Just one note, the RMLD Payments Subcommittee, there's one voting member, Vanessa's obviously up. Very welcome to the town.
And anything that's sort of RMLD, because Vanessa, you sort of played that role when you were on the Fintum before you got elected and attended those meetings. I think you and, you and Dan would make a great team on that. One thing too, I wanted to point out, and it actually did not come through on the, on the printed version, so where it says Board of Selectmen VAS, I have myself and Dan as the two members. And my thinking on this is that since we're already sort of way down the path of trying to fill all the boards and committee assignments, and we've already kind of done that, what I'm proposing is, is that we get through the end of June when we make those appointments. And then Dan and I will have, you know, flip a coin, one of us will step down. And then I thought Vanessa, actually, you can't see it here because it got cut off, but Vanessa, I thought you would be the person to kind of step in and be that second VAS person. And then what we would probably do, because the way our policy is, is that you have two, basically, no one can do more than two years at a time. Dan and I are now doing our third year, is that we would say, Vanessa, you're going to do a two-year term. And then whichever one, Dan or I, when we duke it out, who wants to go first, would be a one-year term. So at least it'd be one year of working together. And then, then Dan and I self would step down, then you would sort of elevate and we'd put someone else into the new two-year term. So that's always kind of revolving. So it did, I apologize, it didn't come out on here, but that was the thinking in terms of VAS. Everything else is pretty much straightforward and I would propose sort of starting it.
I have no problem with that.
Barry, I think you mentioned the transitioning VAS, doing it that way, the last meeting, so you had.
Yeah, I can't remember if I actually had said that.
So, but just to explain why mine weren't late, there was a sort of a conflict between, wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't think we were going to be talking about it tonight, although Bob did send an email. So I, and it wasn't, wasn't posted, so we want to be careful of. I don't, I'm not sure if there's any other way.
No, I mean, this is.
At this point.
Yeah, I mean, I thought about that, but I'm not going to be here next week. Then on the nineteenth, we're reorganizing, that's all going to get lost. And I thought, this is just our own internal organization, it doesn't really impact anybody in the community. So that's why I sent out the email specifically, you know, so that, you know, I would have time to kind of work on it, because I did put a lot of thought into this about it.
Understood. I was just, I was just, got mixed signals on that. So, and then the other thing was, I think a three means you're not interested or at least interested or something like that. Just, I thought it was, I misunderstood the instructions, so.
Okay.
Just because I put a three down, committees and sub, you know, commissions and boards, it doesn't mean I'm not interested.
Can I repeat, one little piece of my liaison report. Andy, we're going to post, we post a number of VAS meetings, we're going to make one of those a fully posted selectmen meeting, so you and Vanessa and John can attend. Pick the one you guys get, send us your nominations.
Okay.
Stopping. For all the members, once you decide on what the roles are, if you would let me know what your preferred method of communication with your liaison groups are, I can tell you, generally speaking, if it's a volunteer board, you will be put on the distribution list for agendas. But not necessarily packets, because not every selectman in the past has one of that. So you really need to communicate through me and I will through the department head if you have preferences. And for those that are liaisons to departments, it's a little harder. You know, fire and police don't have meetings like tonight. So we'll arrange meetings as you wish with, you know, the department heads. But the whole point is, this is meant to improve communication, but part of that is on you to tell us how to communicate with you.
Yeah, so I'm assuming once we, do we formally vote on this or we just?
I think you should.
Okay.
In the past, you know, you haven't, but now that you've got a new policy in place that says it should be approved.
Okay. So I'm assuming that once we do that, Bob, you'll.
I'll circulate it.
This will be circulated and then everybody will get. And then the other thing too, because there are some people who are now going to be serving in capacities that maybe they haven't before. If anybody has any questions, either I would encourage you to ask me, because some of these ones I've served on that I'm kind of sort of giving up or talked about, who can, you know, put you in touch with relevant staff. But I think this is a good plan and I think it's going to get us out there in a really positive way. Was there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, move the board to approve the, shall I call it the draft liaison assignments developed by Acting Chair Berman, dated five fourteen eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure. I'll, I guess I can go first. There are some cases, I think part of the liaison function allows us to get to know different entities in town that we don't normally interact with that much. It's a learning experience for selectmen. So in that, in those cases, I think that if people have been liaisons to a BCC for a number of years or a department, maybe we should think about switching it up a little bit to give others a chance at.
I did a little bit of that, but I tried to juggle, because that is a good point, because first of all, the board is never going to be static, right? There's always going to be new people coming on the board.
Yeah.
And there's also going to be new volunteers coming on all the different committees. So I try to kind of juggle between what people really wanted to do and then moving around. Like for myself, since I've been on here, I've been a liaison to the library. And I did that during the point when the library was getting built, which is really probably one of the most important things. I've done that. I'm now asking you to do that, because I think you would be tremendous at it. So I'm giving one up.
You're not going to build something again, are you?
No, no.
They did better.
Not for another hundred and twenty-five years, right? Obviously, Vanessa, you're new, so everything on here you're doing is really for the first time. So, you know, I try to juggle and balance that.
Yeah, I see that.
And, you know, obviously, if we go through half the year or, you know, or again, even if it's another year, we get to do this every year. So it's like, you know what, I don't want to do that anymore.
There are public meetings, you can go.
Yeah.
I mean, just because you're not the liaison doesn't, you know, preclude you from coming.
Right. Although like some of the departments, they don't have public meetings that we go to.
But it's just, you know, a way to kind of keep your ears somewhere. Any other discussion?
Just one point, if there are two selectmen liaisons and a member of the board who is not a liaison wishes to attend, please let me know, because we need to post the board. We do not post the board to attend any of these meetings unless we know.
Right. I mean, and some of those I think Bob will know, I mean, if it's like, you know, a meeting with like ZBA where there's going to be three hundred people there, you know, that might, we all might be interested in going and, you know, and then the other thing, you know, I sort of struggle with that idea, because if I just made everybody have one, because I think everybody right now has about twelve to fourteen different assignments. That's a lot, right?
Some of them are shared.
Some of them are shared and some of them don't really have meetings. And if some of them do meet, they're not, I would call a lot of heavy lifting. So I would rather err on having one person go, right, than have nobody go. So that's why there's two, but there may be those, there's those times. So if you're thinking of going to a meeting where you're not the liaison and you know, like on council and agent, you know, Dan and John, or, you know, they may both be there, just let, you know, let Bob know.
I think the two assignments is actually a good idea. We've actually, so some of these over the years, Dan and I have kind of tag teamed, but not officially, because we just have, you know. And it's part of that thing that you're bringing up, Andy, that you want to get to know what's going on in this particular place. So I think the fact that you've added, that you've made a couple of these, you know, a two-person official is probably a good idea.
The one, the one thing that actually, Mr. Cruck is here, I should ask him. So since I've been around, the Celebration Committee was never something that was ever really a big kind of thing. I don't think, I don't know if anybody ever went to any meetings, but now I think you're involved in planning with. with like ZBA, where there's going to be 300 people there, you know, might, we all might be interested in going, and, you know, and then, and then the other thing, some, you know, I sort of struggle with that idea, because if I just made everybody have one, because I think everybody right now has about 12 to 14 different assignments. That's a lot, right?
Some of them are shared.
Some of them are shared, and, and some of them don't really have meetings. And if some of them do meet, they're not, I would call a lot of heavy lifting. So I would rather err on having one person go, right, than have nobody go.
Yeah.
Right, so that's why there's two, but there may be those, there's those times. So if you're thinking of going to a meeting where you're not the liaison, and you know, like on council and agent, you know, Dan and John, or, you know, they may both be there, just let, you know, let Bob know.
I think the two assignments is actually a good idea. We've actually, so some of these, over the years, Dan and I have kind of tag teamed, but not officially, because we just have, you know. And, and it's part of that thing that you're bringing up, Andy, that you want to get to know what's going on in this place. So I think the fact that you've added, that you've made a couple of these, you know, a two-person official is probably a good, a good idea.
The one, the one thing that actually, Mr. Cruck is here, I should ask him. So since I've been around, the Celebration Committee was never something that was ever really a big kind of thing. I don't think, I don't know if, if anybody ever went to any meetings, but now, I think you're involved in planning with 375th. There could be some more activity coming on that might require some work from this board.
Yeah, I mean...
So, you know, I should have maybe asked whether you wanted to liaisons, or you could decide that down the road, or...
I'm not directly involved with 375th.
Oh, I thought you were.
I know a lot of people who are, so...
Oh, yeah, so you just won the trivia contest, that's why.
That'd be lots of good.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I expect there'll be a lot more activity around that.
And that might be sort of maybe more ad hoc participation on that one, but, yeah.
I think it's also important to say that liaison assignment does not mean that select board members have to attend every meeting.
Right.
You pick and choose.
Right.
It would be unreasonable to expect, you know, some of you to attend every meeting, which is not possible.
Yeah, the beauty of YouTube, although being there does have its benefits.
Yeah, and that's why, you know...
That's why you get the agenda in advance.
Anybody who's working on a committee with somebody else, if you know there's a meeting coming up, you know, a text, or, hey, are you going? I'll go, okay, I do go in this one, and then brief each other on what happened. So at least, you know, we know what's going on.
If there's an issue that's of a strong interest, you'll probably know anyways, but department heads will let you know. You know, we really think we should have a representative at this meeting, so you'll be kept on.
All right, any other discussion? All right, ready to go?
In, along the lines of learning a new shtick in, in some of these cases, I haven't had much education in police and fire, and, and John, I don't know, have you been on those for a number, have you been the liaison to them for a number of years?
One year.
So at some point, I'd like to get some more experience with them, because they are due a lot in town.
Well, that was a good example. Okay, all right, so, you know, again, so next year, whoever's the chair, you know, I didn't even notice that John had put asterisks on there. I just missed that completely, but if there are things that you really wanted to, you know, just, just let them.
Andy, because they don't actually hold meetings, you're free to contact them, or me jointly, or along, you know, you don't have the restrictions.
Yeah.
Contact your chief at the breakfast thing.
There you go.
Coffee with a selectman.
With who?
Coffee paid, paid for by the chief.
What the hell?
By the chief. He was very gracious about it. But I, I should contact Bob.
Yeah, it's always a good courtesy.
To the chief, right.
Yeah, I, I think so.
And the reason there are specific liaisons for just a couple of departments is for the departments to reach out to you, not so much the other direction. If they need something, if there's something going on...
They usually go to you, and then if you need us.
They usually go to me, and then, and to you. It's not that often, John.
No, it's not. I check in with them, just because it's a matter of course for me. And I, you know, I, you know, I think it's probably a good idea. That's what I do anyway, whether it's a good idea or not, is up to somebody else's discretion.
That makes sense.
Okay. Any more? Hearing none. All those in favor? Closed. Five zero. So Bob, you'll get this kind of...
I will.
Posted. Okay, great. All right, what's next? Okay, Town Manager Contract. So we're at the time of year again. I think it was our last meeting, or the meeting before, I had asked Sharon, when she was here, to sort of pull together, and also maybe with Judy's assistance, the sort of survey of Town Manager Compensation, and also potentially looking at some contracts. The way it stands right now is that because this board did nothing in February, Bob's third year of his contract has kicked in, and, and you are employed as of the end of August?
August 1st of next summer.
So, so the end of July, August 1st of 2019.
Correct.
Which basically, it sounds like it's a long time, we're a year away, but I think now is kind of the time where maybe to get, to get, to get that, sort of that data collected. And in the past, you know, for the benefit of Andy and Vanessa, I'm not a real expert on it, because I've only gone through one, I think it might have been in my first year. I think what the process is, is that there's a subcommittee of select board members that will collect that, meet with Bob, kind of, you know, hammer some things out, may have some discussions, and then bring back a final contract for the board to ratify. Do I understand that?
That's what we did the last time.
And you also work closely with Town Council.
And we work with the Town Council, okay. All right, so what I'm going to suggest, you know, sort of the same process, is that, you know, I would like to do that, and Dan, I'm going to ask you to assist me on that.
Sure.
And, you know, we'll collect that. I just want everybody to know that this, you know, nothing's going to get done behind, behind closed doors.
We'll bring reports of progress.
Progress reports, and then ultimately, this board has to vote, and ultimately support the contract. So it's all going to be discussed, and it'll all be public information. But in terms of sort of, you know, sitting down with Bob and calling through the data, it's best done as a...
And Dan assisted me the last time, so, you know...
I mean, well, I mean, Dan, you're the Grover Cleveland of this board. You've, you've gone through one term, a long break, and then another.
Oh, very good, very good. That's a first.
So, and you've got that sort of institutional knowledge, and, you know, I've, the only I have a con, I mean, I've done some contract negotiation, most notably my own. So I know you've done it a lot, so I think you'd be a great asset to assist, so.
Happy to assist.
Bob, did I leave anything out on this?
No, just the board, at any time, if they wish, or I wish, can go into executive session to have a detailed discussion. So we've never done that in the past, but it's an option.
All right. And essentially, we should aim to wrap this up by end of year, January, November, December?
If, for some reason, I'm not going to be here after next August 1st, by your choice or mine, you really need, I'm going to say a minimum of six months, and probably nine months to know that, so you really ought to get something wrapped up, I'd say by the fall.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting there's a problem, it's just conceptually, that's how much lead time you're really going to have.
I would suggest the end of Q3 be the target, instead of the end of Q4.
Okay. So, so basically, according to the contract, if, if, I think if you, if you decide that you want to pursue other things, you have to give us six months?
If nothing happens, it ends.
Right.
Because it cannot extend again.
Right.
So it's just done. If neither of us do anything, it stops.
Right.
If I wanted to leave early, I could give you six months.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, yeah, you're right.
I think Q3, I think Q3 should be the...
One of the differences is, under Mass General Law, superintendents of schools can roll over a year eternally.
Right.
There is no limit of three years, but that's the only position, so that they don't have that, there's a definite end date on a contract, but for town managers and others, there is.
So, so there's a definite end date, but then what the school committee would just do is just vote on extending it by one year, or kind of roll it over, and what becomes a...
They're going to have to vote default.
If they don't do anything, they just continues.
They have to take an affirmative vote to not, to not do it.
Actually, we have to do, we have to do an affirmative.
You do in this instance, because it can't roll over, you didn't have to previously. It could roll one more.
Right, we just, we basically took no action in February, by February.
And if school committees take no action, it could roll forever. That's, that's the difference.
Ah, okay, got it. All right, so that's it. So in terms of that, I know I, I had talked to Sharon and Judy, and I know it's a really, really tough time, especially for Judy, given all of the different positions that we're trying to fill. You know, so is there any, you know, kind of reasonable expectation about when we get things done?
You have to talk to them.
Can I call her myself?
Absolutely. Sharon had said to me, within the last 10 days, we have received some contracts, we're making some progress, I don't know what kind.
All right, I'll, I'll touch base with Judy, and then Dan and I will.
Very good.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. Moving on. Select Board Policy, Article 1, Discussion, Section 1.4, Communication. Bob, I think this is, I don't think it's the right notation. I think 1.4 is something else.
No, here's what I have, it's in the packet.
Okay. All right, well, my bad. I, what I wanted to do, and again, I apologize for this, you can hear, I'm not really firing on all cylinders. My intention was to sort of write out, for lack of a better term, some study questions that I would have gotten to you ahead of time. I just, I just couldn't, and I apologize for that. I think we've done a really good job, I think, in sort of already talking about responsive communication. What happens when somebody contacts us? You know, whether it comes, Bob responds, and how we do. I think we've kind of, I think we've had, I think we've had some really good progress and discussion on that. I don't want to really kind of go over that much tonight. What I want to focus on is sort of proactive communication. What role of any should we do to communicate to the public? The things that we're working on, the things that we're thinking about, the things that we voted on, the things that we've done, whether that's through the website, through electronic media, which, and opens up a whole other can of worms. Bob, you had sent us over some policies. But I just thought, I really want to focus on that. I know that there's some clearly different, if not competing, ideas here on that, and I want to get a sense of the board about what you think our role should be in externally communicating, whether that's a Twitter account, a Facebook page. What are some of the other things people use? I mean, basically that. I mean, you see, some towns have it, I know we have it on the town. We don't have it from the board. And I know it opens up a can of worms in terms of, well, because it now it's public, it has to be kept as public record, and do we have the ability to do that? And also, serial communication becomes an issue.
Yes.
But I just, I want to get, I just want to throw it out there, and I'm going to sit back, and I'm going to let you guys sort of talk about what your thinking is, what you think we should do, what you think we shouldn't do, and we can just kind of talk.
I just want to, I think you all know this, but I want to say it out loud. There's an important distinction that you need to discuss between you all having a certain account, and you having a collective account.
Correct, yeah, that was another part.
You can all have a Facebook page as a selectman.
Right.
And do and say anything you want.
Right.
More or less. It's very different when you agree to have a shared, five-person.
That's, that's actually a really good point, and one of the things I actually had written down. Because, you know, people want to, you know, if they get something from, you know, from, Dan Ensming or selectman, well, is this Dan's idea? Is this, you know, did Vanessa agree with him on this? Can Barry reply to what Dan wrote? Because, you know, maybe I say, good job, Dan, or, or Dan, maybe you missed this point. Now that's two people, now Vanessa can't do it, because now that's a third, right? So...
Here's, here's the vital distinction. I think we have to be very careful about using this for deliberation. I mean, we're not, you know what I'm saying, formative things. It's fine to use it without cross-commentary to report things that we've done, to convey information. We have to be very careful about using this as a deliberative medium for the reasons just cited.
Right. And I think that, I think the state's slowly coming up to speed with Facebook and the possibility of deliberation. One person says something here, another one, but it's all, we can all see it. So, let me ask you, Barry, so this is not in the, this proposal is not in the packet?
No, this is, this is basic.
You do have some other stuff about electronic, okay.
Right. My, what I wanted to really talk, because I think it's sort of, it's something that we've never really, we've talked about it a few different times, we never really came to agree, but we never really spent a lot, a tremendous amount of time thinking about it. And even deciding that it's something that we think we should do. I think we need to sort of figure out, is it something that we want to do? And if there's agreement there, figure out, well, how are we going to actually do that? Is it, you know, do we then form a, another liaison thing, sort of, you know, Select Board Communication Committee, where obviously there's two members, right?
Yeah.
In which case, decide what we're going to want to post? Or do we want to bring it to the board first, and then decide what we post? Do we work with staff, do we rely on staff? I mean, those are all, that's if we decide we want to do it, right? Then there's the question of the how.
What's the goal?
I think the goal is for us to be out there as much as we possibly can. And I think that...
Out there...
Out there in the community, communicating with what we want to do. The thing that, the reason why I really started thinking about it more, more than ever before, was when we got the surveys back, right? And the survey, people said, how do you get your information? This is when we talked, when we surveyed about kind of the last override, the October 16 override. And I just remember when Jane Miller was going through it, it was like, you know, big bar graphs, and it's like, hearing from my elected officials, it was like it barely registered, like, you know, a thumbnail, right? In terms of, now, does that mean because they don't come to our meetings, or watch it on RCTV? Well, you know, there's other ways to get it. I, I think that, you know, we, we're doing some really fun and exciting things in this town, right? And I think that for better or for worse, Facebook is the way people communicate right now. They don't get, hell, they do, I read the Chronicle. You know, Bob, they read the, you know, but people are looking on this more than they're looking on anything else. And I think that...
Not all people, but...
I think it's, I think there's, there's a high element of risk.
Yep. I don't disagree.
So what about this? I, I think to better communicate, communicate with the community, it's going to have to be a multi-pronged approach, because a lot of people use Facebook, a lot of people don't. Some people use e-mails, some people use their website. So what if, what do you think about the idea, Barry? If you want to, if your idea is...
It's not just me, that's just the rest of the board, yeah.
Okay. What do you all, Barry's idea is to get out there, what, what the Select Board is doing, because not everyone watches our meetings. What if we sort of wrote essentially a liaison report after our meetings? I'm not sure how it would work out, and put that, this meeting happened, and the Select Board did a, you know, A, B, C, D, just a quick hit of some of the things we accomplished. We voted on this tonight, we voted on that tonight.
Who would write it?
I mean, one of us could.
I think that's, see, that's where the risk runs.
Yeah, exactly, John. And I don't have a great answer to that, in a timely fashion.
You know, look, you know, the YouTube is available. I mean, if, you know, how do you pile another job on somebody? But we have minutes, that's going on, but those are draft minutes that are waiting to be approved.
But they're available.
You know, they're, so, you know, I don't want to say that this is a redundancy, but in some ways it is. And then when you try to think of, think through, who is actually going to write these?
Yeah.
Look, we all have a style. A, we all have a style.
Right. Right.
B, we all, you know, have our own personal slant, much as we try to be objective. I don't think there's any, I don't think that's arguable. It's demonstrated itself, you know, frankly, over the course of the last couple of years.
For five different people.
Yeah, exactly. So, I think the idea of, you know, trying to have one person writes it, or two people write it, and then you have to go back and forth on that. I just, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, and I, and I, people do need to know as much as they can know, but they have to take some responsibility themselves for, you know, going after that. And part of what happens on Facebook, for example, I mean, there's a Twitter crowd and there's a Facebook crowd, and there are some people that do both. But probably not as many as you think. I mean, you're kind of one or the other. So which one do you go to, becomes the first question. Then, you know, the next thing that comes up is, you go to Facebook, and we all know that that can be a valuable tool, it can also be a sewer. And, you know, it has demonstrated itself that way. You know, in our town, oh, spread out over seven or eight different, you know, Reading pages. And, you know, a page is labeled one thing, and then something else materializes on it. We've all seen it. And it comes out in a, you know, with great vitriol. And then it doesn't seem to matter what you put up there, somebody's going to attack it. So, all I'm saying is, I applaud the idea. I think there's a high element of risk in this thing and turning it into something we don't want it to be. I think you just have to be careful.
I think there's multiple issues happening here, from what I see. One, there is the idea of the board being more visible and more accessible. So I think, Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea with having perhaps a select board Facebook page is to say, "This is what's coming up. We have a meeting. These are the things we're going to discuss." At the end of that meeting, any one of us could say, "These are the results, or these are the votes of these particular agenda items. Here's where you can go for more information." John, to your point, I think you're right, and that there, people do need to take some initiative in being informed. At the same time, I think it might be unrealistic to expect people to sit through all of these meetings.
I agree with that.
So.
We've heard that myself.
However, if we were to make it easy for people and provide a summary, the minutes, the purpose of the minutes is for record-keeping purposes. They're oftentimes delayed. The staff needs to process them. We need to vote on them. They sometimes go up months after the fact. I think the minutes aren't.
But they actually are accessible to the public immediately upon creation legally.
Upon creation.
Yes.
A draft copy, unapproved.
Draft copy, they can call Caitlin as soon as she types it.
They can call her.
Yes.
That, to me, is not accessible. It might technically meet the legal definition, but if what we want is to inform the public, then we need to make it immediately available to them without any further effort on their part. I think if we were to have something like a select board Facebook page with one of these summaries that says, "This is what was covered in the meeting. This is how the votes went down. This is the implication." We could even take turns doing that, so that there's always a different voice having it. And by posting it on the select board Facebook page, one, there's no deliberation, because we're not having a conversation, we're simply stating facts of things that have already occurred, or simply posting meetings. And if people choose, we can share that on the Reading Parenting Network, or any of the other groups that exist on Facebook. The discussions that follow, we don't necessarily.
They do what they do. I get that they find their own way.
And that could be, that could be like a little.
So.
I'm sorry.
How about this, then? At some, I mean, the draft minutes are available at some point in time. They aren't approved, you're right, sometimes weeks, sometimes months, for various reasons that could happen. But if the turnaround time is days or within a week, and I don't know, is that realistic?
Yeah, I try to have them through, like, your phone.
Right.
But your meetings get all close together.
They're done with that way.
So, you know, so the draft form could be, you know, posted as this claim, that these are, this is a draft form, unapproved, you know? They're done by an objective, you know, third party? And they are, and they are, they will ultimately, in some form, become the legal record of this meeting.
I agree. They are a legal record. They're not resident-friendly. They're challenging to read, they're lengthy. Mr. Arenas said this. Mr. Halsey said this. Mr. Ensminger said such and such.
No, Mr. Arenas is not saying anything. Who knows what he's saying? He's probably watching, saying something right now to me, but.
So.
Phone went off.
So, but the point is, it's sometimes five pages long. If we want people to be engaged, if we want people to be interested in what we're doing, we need to make it digestible, easy, and immediately accessible. And relevant, which means in a timely fashion. The minutes are great, they're required by law, we should be doing them. That's not, I mean, that's not necessarily communication with residents.
How would you deal with this situation? If someone posts the summary, "I have a material disagreement with some of the facts," quote-unquote?
You, Dan?
What is the means of correcting that?
You mean the person who reads it, or you, Dan, as a selectman?
So, and I suppose something, say, that's exactly, that's not what happened at all. Now we're getting across deliberation. If I correct it or do anything, I don't know how you deal with that.
Dan, could I?
I will not have had a chance to review like I would with minutes.
You know what? We have a member of the fourth state out here.
Stephen Crook got 157 questions. I mean, for example, you could post that you had a fire, badge pin.
Right.
With a picture.
You had DPW proclamation, you had a police proclamation. Next week, you're going to talk about, you know, dual meters for lawn irrigation.
No, and none.
Oh, yes, we are.
When I'm chairing?
See, right away, we have a problem.
We're going to talk about tree lawns.
Or painting paradise and painting it green, or something. Yeah, I mean, this is a fact, this is going to be on next, the next agenda, or this was on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're saying like, like, you know, a nice picture.
Yeah.
Of the guys in here with maybe a copy of the proclamation, then say, "Next time you see, you know, see a firefighter, say thanks." Or, "And then next week, we're going to do this. If you're interested, come down or turn on the TV."
And you might also say that you discussed the communications policy, and how better to reach out to the town. It's a fact. You know, the details of what specifically, it's like the police department's Facebook page. They made a recent narcotics bust, they got a whole bunch of narcotics, a whole bunch of money. Or they, they are having an open house coming up, or just have one this year.
But Dan brings up a good point, though. What if we do have a conflict? What if, what if Dan posts something and I disagree with the way it was written?
Because of the minutes, we have a mechanism to address that. Because that goes, that speaks for the board, because it comes from the board as a vote. So I'm wrestling with how you deal with that.
I think, you know, when we talk about this philosophically, we would have to have a policy in place to determine how we have a write-up of what we post. Given that it doesn't have the same process as the minutes. Because I do think that's valid.
We can delegate the writing of it maybe to staff. I know, like, Wakefield, when they came in on the arts thing, they have like a social media coordinator for the town. I mean, basically, every day, you turn on your phone, and if you, and if you joined up to get those things, the first thing while you're drinking your coffee is a feel-good story about what they're doing. Somebody's doing out there. And, you know, I think the negativity, some of the things out there will get totally mitigated. If people, even if they just saw it for 10 seconds and they go, "Oh, I didn't know they were doing that." And it just accumulates of effect of, of bringing town government to people.
So we have the right people in the room, you know? I mean, so, so for example, I mean, every day, I mean, I get the patch by email. However, I will see probably most Reading things that I read on the patch that comes through my email, I'll see on Facebook, because somebody's picked it up and shared.
No, because Bob's posted.
Well, in the Reading Post, you know, is, you see what's going on in every selectman's meeting.
Yeah, the Reading Post is an excellent, I'm going to sing your praises, you guys do an excellent synopsis, I think, of our meetings.
And Al does the same thing, and I happen to enjoy reading the newspaper. I get it every day.
I wish they'd print you more often, though.
Dan, if I could, see if I could address Dan's concern, which I think is a very real one, and still fulfill the concept of letting residents know what we're doing. And that is simply to put up on our Facebook page, the agenda. I know it's posted somewhere on the town site. We put it, put it up as a first step on the agenda. And then we could write a policy on this, or whatever. But you can simply go by agenda items and say, simply, "Board discussed," or "Discussions will continue," or "Board voted four to one," or whatever to, so people know. And it needs to be short, because people, people's bandwidth is stretched very thin these days. So the minutes are great, they do what they need to do, and this video is great, it does what it needs to be done. But we have things on the agenda that we discuss and sometimes vote on. And I don't think it could, you could in any way bias it somehow by saying, "The board voted on this, and this is the reason."
If you limit it to the stuff actually voted, I think there's a lot less problem.
Right. And again.
If you get discussion, you know, I'm not a stenographer.
No, I don't want to, I wouldn't, I'm not proposing we say anything about how the discussion went. Simply say, "The board discussed this and decided to just pick it up again." Or, you know, some very formulaic, that doesn't go into any detail, but it lets the people know at a quick glance on the Facebook page, what we're going to do at a meeting. It's another way of getting the word out there.
Yeah.
What we plan to do, rather, and what we hope to do. And then if there were any votes taken, what those votes were. And then say, "See the RCTV for more details."
Actually, this could address it, because if, this is a prime example. We're not voting on this particular policy, we're having a conversation on general communication, strategy, and efforts.
Right.
That's it. That's the bullet.
Okay.
Because it's not a matter of opinion, it's just simply what we're working.
And this would be the board's Facebook page as opposed to individual.
Right.
Okay.
Bob, who maintains and decides what to write on the town Facebook page? Now, I know, like, obviously, if there's a street closure, well, obviously, that's information you want to get out there.
It's a combination of Jane and Matt.
So, so here are two stories, two things that I still remember, right? Because I just thought they were really cool. Right? It was when the two guys from DPW, two guys, Stan and I forget the other guy's name, right? A picture of them out on the, on the, on the big trucks, stringing the lights in the car. Everybody goes down there for tree lighting. And they go there, "Oh, my God, all these lights." Two guys, right? And Jane just wrote this story about Stan, and I apologize to the other guy. It's like, that is something, like, you know, that's a, that's a feel-good kind of story that, you know, it happens once in a while, where basically you're honoring an employee. Right? The other thing that just happened a couple of weeks ago, somebody, I think it was on Baldwin Road, an owl fell out of the tree. Right? Turns out, one of the water department guys is a falconer. Right? They knew exactly what to do. They brought in one of the trucks, they brought it up 30 feet, and they brought the owl back. Now that, like, that is a cool and amazing story. Right? And maybe part of it is, every week or 10 days, you do an employee of, you know, a little story about what somebody's doing, an officer, a T, well, not, we don't do T's, it's not our job, but, you know, somebody like that, interspersed with, right, kind of, "Oh, and this week, we're going to be meeting and talking about this." Or, part of the page could be, like what I talked about, some of the two or three things that I really want people to go to. The garden club thing, the Memorial Day, you know, we're going to be there. It kind of gets it out there that we're communicating. It doesn't have to be, it could be including some of the board dry, or, "Here's the agenda. Here's what we voted on."
Dry.
Yeah. I mean, dry, minutes are dry, right? It could be, it could be sort of a combination of all that stuff, where it's like, you know, I don't like the word, because it sounds like we're trying to sell people on something, but our marketing page, you know, it's our town marketing page. And so if somebody comes in and, you know, people are going to be on the rant, and they're going to be complaining about this and that, fine. Right? But also, there should be people knowing that what's going on here, that's good. And, you know, I think there's probably a way to do it. I think there's probably some towns that have done it. I think it needs people really putting their heads together. Maybe it means, you know, we just, you know, I don't want to give anybody any more work, but, you know, a subcommittee of folks will put together to say, "If we're going to do it, this is what it should, this is what it should look like, this is what it should do." Right? Because, I mean, all those risks. Maybe we involve Ray, I don't know.
We should probably check the state, too.
Yeah, I mean, well, Bob said some of those policies in other towns.
Yeah. I think this select board page, Facebook page, should be different from the town page. There should be a town page, and I heartily agree with your ideas about having an employee of the week, employee of the month, and highlight what they did. Our page would be a little more, you know.
Dry.
I'm not going to say that.
Selectman of the month.
It would be less, it might have a little less flavor.
Some empty chairs.
But people care about the things, you know, that we do. And this would be a good, quick-hit way for them to find out what we discussed, and then if we voted on.
That's where the problem is, what we discussed.
No, no, no.
What we voted on.
Just follow the agenda.
That's fine.
Well, I think, well, just like we're discussing this here, we're talking about communication. One of the bullet items could say, "Discuss improving communication strategy with residents." That's it.
And John, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to use the word "discuss" as in describe what we, you know, how, what we talked about. Simply, it was, this is what's on the agenda, this is coming up this Tuesday night. And then afterwards, we could even take turns and say, just go down the agenda and say, "Okay, we voted on that, we discussed that, we voted on that," and type in exactly that. For discussion, see RCTV.
I think the board needs to take a couple of steps back and reexamine what you're trying to accomplish. If it's marketing, that's one thing.
Well, that was my first question, Bob. I agree with that.
Marketing does not mean every single meeting that you have something that's interesting to market.
So it doesn't mean to be.
It means picking out occasional things that are really interesting. I would suggest, although this might be not your long-term objective, is to have all of you, or some group of you, send ideas and work with Jane on things that the selectmen are doing, that you want Jane to include on the town page, and see what the public's reception to it is. If you're looking, and one of the questions that I'll ask right away is, when you put this information out there, are you open to comments or are you closed to comments? There's a huge difference.
I think on something like that, if we had our own page, my thought was going to be this. I've never administered one of these pages, but, you know, it's like, so here it is, and like, there's always like a little flag or a caveat. If you have any comments, or we'd like to talk to selectmen individually or as a group, you can reach them at selectman.cI. You know, they can write whatever they want, but if you want a response to any of that, the vehicle is, you need to contact them through the normal channel, that we will not be responding.
I think that's good.
Well, you don't necessarily need to allow comments.
My feeling is not branding or marketing. I don't think, that's our, I don't think we're in the business of branding or marketing ourselves.
I disagree.
I think that, I think where this has value is improving communication and getting out the word to the town about this, the basic facts of what we do at each meeting. And that could, it's the agenda, and then what was decided, or if it was just discussion, say, "Discussion, see RCTV," or, very simple.
Do you think that plays well with the survey comments? Is that what you think people are asking for? You've spent some time on this, you were telling.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I see a trust gap that was, seemed to be evident in the presentation that was to us. And I think the, one way to increase trust is more communication. But by the nature of the board, it just has to be just the facts made.
Well, weren't you doing that, Andy, for quite some time?
I was.
Are you still doing it?
Yeah, I, I've been good and bad at it from time to time. On a, I have a blog that I would put up, what meetings were going to be held in town this coming week.
Remember that?
And.
It's a lot of them.
But, but it wasn't that bad, but, but only like seven, eight people were looking at it. So.
That's a key. That was my next question. What was your reaction? Because you've been doing this already.
Yeah.
You're getting seven or eight responses or notice.
Yeah. Well, I was doing something a little different. I was just giving people a heads-up mostly about what meetings were going to go on in town. It was just a complement to what the town already does, except, except on clicking on the calendar date, I just listed them, Monday through Thursday, what was happening. I think this is something different. This is something, you know, a number of people have said they, there's a trust gap, I think was the.
And what is that trust gap? I mean, you've worked with three times now. So I want to know what it is.
Yeah.
What you think on what they said.
Because I don't feel untrustworthy, just so you know.
I'm not accusing you of being trustworthy.
But I mean, you continue to bring that up. What are the examples?
I, I think that, to the extent that people put down, they wouldn't vote for an override something like, because they didn't trust the board of selectmen. The way to, the best way to counter that is to say, is to give information as much The way to, the best way to counter that is to say, is to give information as much as possible.
Okay, let me, I, hold that thought for a second, okay? Because I read the trust gap a little differently, right? When someone says, I don't want to vote for the override because I don't trust the board of selectmen, is that because there's specific actions that this board did or didn't do that they didn't like?
Which may or may not even be related to the.
Which may or not even be true?
No.
Or is it because they don't really know what the board of selectmen's doing? In which case, when you say, when I talk about marketing, um, the override, and I use this as an example because this is the most recent thing that we had, people basically had to look into their heart and soul and say, what do I value, what do I want? So, any, any company, any entity, we do it for economic development, we marketed ourselves to developers and investors to come into this town, to basically, you're not telling them a BS story, you're basically painting the things that you do well in a really good light, and if 200 people see it who never saw it before, then I think it's a win. And so, because then they'll, then the next time we go to them for, for something, whether it's an override, a dead exclusion, something happened, they're going to have a more intimate understanding and knowledge of what we do. Why? Because we're bringing it to them. So, I agree, the minutes and all that stuff's important, right? I'm talking about, you know, basically bringing this into their living rooms and into, and into their, you know, onto their phones. And I'm not talking about just, you know, cherry picking and, you know, all this stuff. Sometimes, there's some really critical, hard decisions, and, you know, we're not always going to agree, right? But if people can get a better firm understanding of what it is your town government does, you know, like, like the guys who came in today, it's like, will that break down some of the trust? The trust gap? I think it does, because now people say, oh, they do that, right? And so, you know, that's, that's a piece of what is driving it in my mind, right? It's not maybe the exclusive piece of it, but I think a, a component where we're, where we're, where we're being proactively communicative about the issues facing the town and the things that.
Let's not be talking about building the case for another override just yet.
No, 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 no.
Let's, let's talk about how we're going to be.
Five, 10, 15 years from now.
How we're going to be damn right. Uh, if I have anything to say. Uh, build the case for how we're going to prudently spend the funds that they have given us.
Exactly.
And one of the ways we can do that is to make the information on how we're discussing those funds and discussing the town issues and discussing economic development in an easy, sort of, bite-sized, digestible information. And I want to take it one step further, I want, I want to take a step back from just social media, because there's certain policy parts of social media that get complicated, especially regarding open meeting lots of. But open, but social media only targets one segment of the population, and that's people that are on social media. We have people, you know, young and old that are not on Facebook. So in my mind, it's the same snapshot of what we've done, making it perhaps available on the town website, uh, so that, you know, can we have printed copies at perhaps the library or the senior center where other people might be on, aren't on social media? So I, I want to make this broader, um, as far as not catering strictly to people on smartphones.
So you're right. Yeah, I mean, if you look at what, I'm sure the state senate and the house candidates will be doing, lots and lots of direct mail, that's what they do, because that reaches people.
Right.
And knock the underdogs.
With your permission, I'd like to ask the three members of the public what they think the board should do.
Are they really the public?
You know, what, what can the selectmen do that reaches the community in a meaningful way?
Mr. Crook.
Stephen Crook again. Uh, putting a shameless plug for RCTV.
That's what I meant.
No, don't be ashamed. Some years back, we had a program, Ask the Town Manager.
Yes, we did.
The town manager would go on.
What up with that?
With the host, and would say, hey, you're just having a town lately, and whether it was, you know, you've got, you've got upcoming, um, President Family Day, or the reason why you can't get a bowl, it's because the gas company's digging it up late in May because the oil's all poured out, or whatever else. It would take phone calls, back in the days when people called in somewhere.
From Bill Brown.
Uh, yes.
There you go, like, you know.
It was originally had to be the town manager, it could be town manager, it could be other town staff, it could be, uh, road, road table member of the selectmen themselves, others. I don't think it'd be weekly thing, it could be monthly thing, something, but it's another way to get the information out.
Steve, how do you think that was received, the, the meet the town manager? Uh, do you have feedback on how well that went?
I, I always enjoy watching, he found out sort of what was going on.
Did you community feedback of any sense of how many people watched it?
I'm sure I had the large community feedback on it, just sort of my own impression of it, so I was just, oh, that's why this is going on, or that's why, whatever project or thing in town of late, or what was, what the hot topic was, um, you know, or, for example, back to the social media side for the segment of uses that, you already have, uh, already Knight puts out the bi-weekly newsletter by email, so here's what's happening in town. The selectmen would, on, on Facebook or by tweet, hey, here's what's coming up, here's, you know, whether it's coming up at the meeting, or it's just coming up in town, you know, maybe just the, the garden clubs happening, their flower sale this weekend is coming up, or we're discussing this major thing at our next meeting, and if you have, if you have ideas or thoughts, you know, again, email or call with the selectmen. So I've considered going back to something like, likely asking the town manager, you know, a back form, I don't know, you don't think about that, but it's another way to get out there.
I, I have two points. Um, one, so, um, several months ago, I was speaking with a resident, and he said, I never know if I'm watching the right video for the select board meeting. And sometimes I'll be an hour in and realize it's the wrong video.
It's last week's or?
So, yeah. Um, so would it be possible to have this agenda displayed for the first 10 seconds of.
Oh, that's cool.
A video before it's posted, so that people know the topics that are being discussed?
Well, the chair does go over the agenda at the beginning, that, that people.
I can ask a statement question. Steve, um, a few years ago.
That's not a bad thought.
Sorry. Um, there is technology, and there was discussion of RCTV, of linking segments of the video to an agenda, for instance, so you could click on an agenda online and go right to a, a video clip. Have you gone any further with that? I haven't thought about it for a couple of years.
That's, probably that's done in the, I think it's streamed through our YouTube page.
Yeah.
Where, where, I said some chunks out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's to whether you're watching the right meeting or not, we put up fairly regularly, if, if, say, four selectmen have the data, and we need it well.
Yeah. But if you're going back, you may not always know, if I go back three months, I may not at a glance be aware of what topics are being covered. And it's a four-hour meeting on any given night, and while the chair does review.
Yeah, I think it's better.
The agenda, you know, it's a simple scan as you're sitting there with your computer.
The trouble is with the scan, in standard def, it's going to be unreadable. In high def, you might have a chance, in 4K.
Oh, reading it on, yeah. Till we go shit or new contract.
So, um, you could after the fact, I suppose, could edit it in and, and cut, and insert, you know, simple text, you know, the one line in the agenda, or this now, this coming, perhaps, but that would be additional work, and then piece it through.
I want to, I want to, I wanted to do a couple more minutes of this and then suggest the next step, because we do have one more agenda, and then we have to go to executive session, so, um, anyone in the, in the, in the crowd or in the board have any other?
What you don't want to do, I think, is, uh, give the appearance of trying to manage the news, and, uh, be just another opinion. I mean, if you're going to do something, it'd be boring as hell, but just say what you voted. Uh, you know, you voted unanimously, usually, whatever it is, and say what it was, and, um, and have the agenda, and, and just say, say the, the votes, I mean, the votes are really what's important, anything beyond that could be opinion.
I really agree with that. I think you post the packet, and you post the agenda, and then you post the votes. If there's a vote, great, post it.
And we could even, at some point, if we got fancy, put in the timestamp on where each discussion, where each agenda item started.
Is, is there a single web location where one could, two of them would be, one would be your RCTV YouTube, that's the actual record of the meeting, the actual videotape of the meeting, and the other two would be the agenda and the packet? Can those three be kind of linked together in one?
We can do any of that.
One-stop shopping?
On the selectmen's web, uh, webpage, we can do anything you can imagine.
Okay.
Let me just see, I had, this is a page that's just for every board committee, it lists all the minutes on the left and all the agendas on the right.
Yeah.
Now, so there's two links for the selectmen, that can be copied into the selectmen's page as well as YouTube's.
Without much work.
So we can provide a little easier one-stop shopping for selectmen information.
Is that going to answer the mail?
I, I would suggest that, given the way this, this conversation's gone, that you bring in Matt and Jane Miller, or meet with them on a Monday.
So that was, that was what, uh, because again, I mean, we, I, I know, we could talk about this for a while, and, and Celpic's a plan, and I'm not feeling great.
Yeah.
So, can I, can I suggest, you know, I'm willing to work on this, there's another one of the members here that would like to work on it with me, to sit down, work with Matt and Jane, come back at some point, maybe time uncertain, but with some kind of, you know, more fleshed-out kinds of things, maybe we looked at some, what some of other towns have done. Um, I like Wakefield's, I mean, I, I subscribe to Wakefield's stuff, I didn't, you know, it's like, wow, why don't we do this?
What is, what town of Wakefield, uh, stuff?
There's like a.
Because there's, there's non-town Wakefield stuff.
Maybe that's what I get, I mean.
That's a hard distinction.
Yeah, but it's, it's hard, but I know they have a social media coordinator, right? So obviously, they're thinking about it in a way. Um, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if the rest of the board doesn't mind, let, let's send Vanessa and myself off to the.
Sure.
Library and whatever, sit with Matt and Jane.
And I hope we're going to get rid of use of stationery and stuff like that, too.
Yeah, I was waiting to get that Golden Boss stationery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, that might become something else, like a disclaimer at the bottom of every email response or.
Yeah.
Electronic.
Damn, it's interesting, when you look at the old policy, its guts are still good, its tools are wrong.
Right, right. The manifestation is different.
Use substitution stationery for email, for instance, it's not bad.
Right. Also, I think, Bob, do we have a formal social media policy in town, like this Plainfield?
We have a draft one going into the personnel policies, um, so it's not a final, not a final.
Was that, was that going to apply to boards, committees, and commissions as well?
We don't have the authority, you would.
Yeah, I think, I think this is an important adjunct to what we're, this came off of four when you came on.
Yes.
If you could send those out again, the Plainfield.
Thank you.
Actually, I think they all kind of looked sound, I think, I think Plainfield ruined it, everyone else copied it.
I have it somewhere. I'll be happy to.
Let me just.
Andy, you have yours?
Let me just read to you the ones we have.
That was the best of the breed, I thought.
Easton, Templeton, West Boylton.
There you go.
And Plainfield.
Yeah, just send them out again.
Samples I can resend.
I think those are more for, like, you know, if you work on the police department.
Well, it also applies to us, because it is, thou shalt not's in there.
These are selectmen's social media policies, so this is like pick up the West Boylton. You know, it is a board of selectmen policy, so.
Yeah, that's not reinvent the wheel.
No, but I, I remember looking at it and saying like.
That's pretty recent, too.
I remember reading those and saying, well, it, it gets at some of them, but no.
Right. So, yeah, that'd be great.
Um, are we, are we good on this?
Sure.
Anybody else for it?
Um, at some point, you're obviously going to need to work through town council.
Yes, yeah.
On behalf of the town council, he doesn't want you to do anything.
I know he doesn't.
All it is is risk, John's risk.
It's managing risk, and I, you know, listen.
Visually find collective progress.
I think, I think there's a little bit of risk that, that might need to be taken in order to be out there and communicating in an, in an effective way. So, obviously not exorbitant risk, but.
Yeah, and I think I'll loop Jane in, ask her what the best practices are, and she'll let her go. We just happen to find four.
And then, and then we can, okay. All right, thank you, I, I think this was a really fruitful discussion, I, I, at some point, I really, we're either going to do this or we're not, but I want to just finalize it, and I think we're kind of in the right direction. So, um, the last thing on here before we approve minutes and go into executive session is, it's actually kind of a, um, continuation of sort of our liaison discussion, which is sort of the Economic Development Project Communication, well, I guess liaison. And Andy, I had asked you to do something, which you got back to us, which now, of course, I won't be able to find.
I got it behind me, if that helps.
Can we take a two-minute break, Barry, and we fill in?
Sure, yeah, sure.
But just go get some water. All right, so we're, break at 9:03.
So this is just a motion to.
This housekeeping.
Give Bob authority.
You know, the council has said it's okay, but I'd feel better because your documents were adopted through a hearing process. I'd feel better than you said, said to me, it's okay, because you're.
Well, I, you know, okay, we're not at the discussion phase anyway yet. Just for a second.
Second?
The discussion? Yes. So, um, to Bob's point, I mean, we were constituted a certain way, the state continues to recognize us a certain way, I, you know, I mean, I know the town meeting took its, you know, took its action, um, what is this motion really about? I need to know before I vote.
Yeah, the, um, what town meeting did was only to change the general bylaws, only. Any other actions is at the will of the board, I'll say. Um, you have currently a, a set of board of selectmen policy documents up on the website. If you're going to be known by another name, I think, you should change them to select board policy, Article 1, Article 2, so forth, and all the references in those policies should change. I will tell you a snapshot of executive session through negotiations, and without objection, I'm changing references to you as a body to select board in legal documents, because that seems to be the direction town meeting wanted.
This agenda for today's meeting says, board of selectmen.
That's harder.
Would it not be prudent to, I mean, if you're going to make, make sure this is 100% official, wait till the AG approves?
Certainly, certainly would.
Then we don't have to change it back in case she has us change of heart?
So the AG has to approve town meetings, uh.
Any bylaw or zoning bylaw change?
I mean, you're right, until the AG has said something, it's not official.
Unless you feel.
You must be asking for this for a special reason.
Only because we're working on board of selectmen policies or dawn on, no other reason.
When will the Attorney General?
Takes a couple of months, yeah. Don't be that long.
Well, I think once it, once the, once the Attorney General blesses it, I think that we should just go forward and change everything that we can.
So then, we'll leave everything as is, because, you know, we have a lot of work to do on websites, and for instance, the minutes template is hard to change. Um, some of the things through, uh, the website, we can't do, we have to get a vendor to do them, so we'll just wait.
We're going to retroactively change all the minutes to say.
No, no, no.
No, no, just from the time that it's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to create unnecessary work for the staff, let's just wait for the Attorney General.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, we're still going to refer ourselves that way, um, and then, you know, the paperwork will catch up, so.
It's actually starting to roll off the tongue a little bit.
It is, isn't it? Just like Ms. Ms. All right, so do we want to just pull this motion, or just?
That's fine, I don't mind.
I'll withdraw my motion with the, uh, okay of the secretary.
Did we?
Put it on the table.
I think I did, oh, you did, okay, all right?
Cool.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the, um.
Economic.
Economic liaison. Andy, you, thank you for taking the time and doing this. Um, basically, I, we, we had brought it up, and, and the notion being that this is the first time in really, I can remember, in the history of the town, at least since I've lived here, that we've had so much stuff going on, different projects all at once. Um, there'll be probably five or six downtown projects, Eaton, Eaton Lakeview, um, and, and given that, sort of, the neighborhood angst around some of the stuff, um, I floated the idea of at least unofficially, maybe not calling it a liaison, but a, a point of contact that neighbors could have on each of the projects. Andy, you wrote this up, and I, you know, we want to share with everybody, and we can discuss and decide if that's something we want to do, and if it is, then we can just assign, you know, if anybody wants, you know, I'm not going to require anybody to do it, um, but, you know, people want to take that on for different projects, we could do that.
Did people read it?
Yeah, yeah, no, let me ask you what your intention is. Now, walk me through the process, a question arises in the mind of a resident. What would this policy have them do? What would be the. What would be the sequence of people they would talk to?
So, I think there are, this would go in stages.
Okay.
It would be the selectman or selectwoman or member of the select board, boy, that gets difficult, become familiar with, you know, work with the planning department and become familiar with, hey, there's a development that's looking like it's going to go up here. And understand that type of development, learn the processes and general timelines for the proposed development so that, and then reach out to the neighborhood and let them know what's going on. Sort of get out in front of it, so to speak, so that the neighborhood knows what's going on and can get involved in the beginning. So there's a sort of a two-way communication or three-way communication if you include the board. And then the second step would be during, when the project gets approved, during the demolition and construction, at that point, the liaison would turn more into, I envisioned it, help communicate with the town and vice versa. So if people had concerns or questions, we'd steer them to the right department, or if they were getting frustrated about something, they'd have one of us, their representatives, helping them out.
What is different from today? I mean, that's what I do right now. This week, it's Tuesday, I've got calls from three of them already.
And I have as well, and...
And, you know, it's what we do.
We all do, but I think it'd be, and then the liaison would report back to the entire board what transpired during, since the last meeting, if anything, on that project. It would make, we'd sort of be acting as a team with different point people on different projects. And, yeah, go ahead.
So, I have two points. One, just as far as your first point, Andy, the idea of the select board liaison for neighborhoods impacted by economic development, the concept of that individual reaching out to the neighborhood has me a little concerned because how do you even do that? I think the neighborhood needs to organize first, and then we can see. So I think that's step one.
I had a problem with that part of it, too.
Right. But I think that's easily worked around. And to your point, John, as far as, you know, what's different from now, right now, individual neighborhoods don't have one person to reach out to. There was a situation once with one of the projects where they reached out to the entire board, and they said nobody got back to them. So, I think when you email the entire board, it can sometimes feel like a black hole because you're missing that personal contact. Whereas if you have one person assigned to each project, that's not to say that the others can't also assist or communicate on that particular project, but simply that we have one person, or at least this is how I interpreted it, that we have one person who's as close to a subject matter expert as we non-experts can get on this. And really, just to make it friendlier for the neighborhood, because for some of these people, they've never interacted with town government, and it can be a very daunting process to know who to reach out to, when, how, what the process is. And we might be able to simply direct them to the right person. Bob is the right person, Jean is the right person, whoever.
Chip Sagala.
Right, depending on what the issue is.
Well, you're absolutely correct that most people don't know how to navigate town government, and I really think that is our job. One of the things I think you have to be very careful of is if you isolate the information around one person, then suddenly, people feel like, oh, well, can I reach out to Vanessa or do I have to reach out to Halsey because he's the liaison? I mean, you know, I think you just have to be careful of that. I mean, I have no intention, whether we do this or not do this, of stopping being involved in every one of those projects. I have been always since I've been a selectman. I always will be. And this won't change that. Matter of fact, it may cause it to get cloudy, and I'm concerned as a result of that.
I think that, a couple of things. First of all, on the first part about one project, before their projects, you already have that, you have liaisons to CPDC and you have liaisons to zoning. Until it goes through that, they're not projects, right? So if anybody has concerns, I mean, Vanessa, you attended some, I mean, I attended a bunch of them over the last year, you know, because it was my, I was a liaison, and I, and people, they saw me there, and they, you know, they reached out when they had questions or concerns. It's when it becomes, after it becomes a project. John, no one's going to suggest that you're not going to be involved as much as you can or want to be, but I think it's important that each of these projects has, okay, you know, they've got people who live in a neighborhood that no matter what it is, if Berman's the guy, they're still going to call Halsey. Right? But there's other people in the neighborhood that don't really talk to any of us and say, oh, Berman's on this one, you know, I can call him. And again, our role is not to play the role of town staff.
Yeah, that was a clarification.
Or to intervene in that way. It's more of a, you know, ears on the ground, feet on the ground, ears to the ground, hey, you know, people are really concerned about this, put a phone call into Jean, to Bob, to, you know, whoever's involved and say, hey, this is what we're hearing. And then, you know, we're the conduit. I certainly don't want to get involved in any, you know, in any, you know, people are upset about the developer because there's dust. I mean, obviously, that's an issue, but there's ways around that. I don't want to get a million phone calls. I just want people to know that there's a place that they can go, and that we're more of the conduit, you know, to funnel information, and then, as importantly, to kind of follow up. Hey, did, you know, TPW get back to you? Did, you know, just so that we're kind of closing that loop. And then if not, then say, pick up the phone and say, hey, you know, they're still talking about this. Again, not to overstep and overreach and become what staff does, but just to sort of be a facilitator and additional communicator on what staff does.
I think it's also important, if you have one liaison, Barry and everybody, that it prevents if they contact, if a neighborhood group contacts three of us, and there's a possibility of getting mixed messages on something. And really, the, that's why I thought I'd write this, and it's not perfect right now. It needs to be worked on, but it would be a way of one voice speaking to the neighbors and letting them know how the process works and helping them navigate it. And then we report on that back to the entire board so everybody knows what I'm saying to, or I've been discussing with this neighborhood, and...
But again, the role of the liaison, I don't even want to call it a liaison.
Yeah, we can call some else.
Communicator is basically to sort of be the one who captures sort of questions and concerns and passes them on to relevant staff. And obviously, a couple of weeks ago, we had some concerns about some potential hazardous waste material. Well, that's, you know, to the point where, the level where it has to actually be brought up to the whole board.
But at the point it was brought up, I had no idea of the involvement of DEP, how they have an onsite guy on call, and he's giving regular reports, and he can shut the whole thing. Now...
That's going to be rare.
Yeah. I mean, the Board of Health is a different animal than DEP. They're actually more powerful than DEP in some aspects.
Some ways.
But in any event, that would be, see, more of a facilitator, you know, when, and I get calls like this at work, where someone said, I called this department in my town hall about this site, and then they put me over to this person, and I wasn't able to leave a message. And then they're frustrated. So this would be someone that they could go to.
Another town, right?
It was never rare. Well, actually, I don't work on...
Bob, did you have something?
Good test.
Yeah, you raised a question early, which is a question I had, is mid-large development projects. Tell me what that is.
How do you define that?
Didn't they put a footnote in there?
Is this a big deck on a house?
If you mean somebody that has started to go through either CPDC for 40R or ZVA for 40V, that's easy to define. I understand what that means.
So that's got to be defined.
So, if that's what you mean, honestly, you have to be really careful not to be micromanaging an appointed board also, in the appearance of that. It's not just staff.
No, 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 that's why it's like after the, after it's already been through.
And if you consider, for instance, Eaton Lakeview as just an example, before they went to any other body, they went to conservation because they wanted to first understand, you know, for any given site in town that's being developed, we can probably tell you, there's been three or five developers that have looked at it, you don't want to be in part of those. Because, you know, three out of four are going to disappear. So you really need to define, when is the selectman have interest in this?
I think once it gets approved by ZVA or CPDC.
I wouldn't, you know, okay, if it's approved, that's fine, but it could be when it appears in front of a board, as opposed to if it's just a thought.
Well, if it appears before the board, you have your CPDC and you have your zoning, ZVA.
Because there's a reference here, for instance, attend a DRT meeting. All DRT meetings are well before anything's approved. So you'd never want to attend...
And they're not really public meetings.
No, I wouldn't.
They're not. Or are they?
DRT meetings are public meetings.
Those are just staff.
They're not.
They're like a staff meeting.
Public is invited if it's pertinent to, if they're involved.
No, 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 no. There's a reason for that.
So, for example, if you're having a, if you're having a DRT about the Fall Street Fair, you're going to invite the Rotary Club, which is part of the...
Oh, certainly.
But that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So you're going to invite the participant who is a member of the public.
Are meeting minutes recorded for the, for DRT meetings?
No, they're more like notes.
Yeah, that's true. They're not formally.
They just hand out for everyone.
But that's because one of those two bodies, ZVA or CPDC, will inherit a project, and the meeting notes serve as all the background. They want to know what staff had as a discussion. It's rare that volunteer board members are invited to those, but Virginia's a good example. Anytime there's a historic issue, we don't have staff that does that. We don't, you know, we have a conservation administrator, we don't have a historical. So there are occasionally volunteers in there, but they're generally not.
And the benefit, as you see it, of keeping this as just a staff meeting is what?
Honesty. You know, one of you go in the room, there's a mayor in the room. That's the thought. Developers won't be as forthcoming because they're not sure what's going to get out in the newspapers.
So they want a give and take, a free give and take with staff.
And they get severe criticism from us.
We did that at the BRA and at the city.
So I have a couple of comments about this. One of them is, you know, the whole idea, Andy, of mixed messages, they elect us for a mixed message. I mean, they want, they want to hear what we each, each in our own way have to say. So the idea of shunting that is a real problem for me. You know, as I said just a few minutes ago, we can liaison till our heads fall off, it's not going to stop me from taking a call from somebody.
John, nobody is, no one is putting the brakes on you, John. John, no one is putting the brakes on anybody. All it is is designed to basically give people in the neighborhood, organized neighborhood groups on every single one of these projects. It's Gould Street, Lincoln Street.
I know them all.
Right, okay, they're organized groups. If they're given a name of a person to call, they can choose to call that person, they can call right to go right to Bob. All it is is just another vehicle for those people, and it's not putting the tamper on anybody's ability to do what they were elected to do in their own right.
Well, just as a point of information, that is not what Andy just said. Okay? Andy said he didn't want mixed messages out there. So, a mixed message is a mixed message, and people elect five different people so that they can get a message as we see it. We represent them as a group of five, not as one. I would say this to you, just as a caution from my perspective, every time you layer another piece of government on top of government that already has the responsibility, the margin for error, the opportunity for missteps, the, you know, the micromanagement opportunity that presents itself among staff, I mean, the only staff we have any kind of interactive management role with is Bob and Sharon. I mean, those are the, those are the people that we actually hire.
I agree.
And I think we have to be extremely careful. This is layering government on top of government, and I find that offensive.
I think, I mean, if I may, I think it might be looking into this more than it is as I interpret this, and we can fine tune the language, but I think the goal here is to be accessible to the residents and to give them a point of contact, because it can be intimidating for people who are trying to navigate this, who may not feel, there may be people who are comfortable reaching out to you, perhaps they know you, perhaps they've seen you on TV. But for those, I think, that are starting with no understanding of what this is, and we've seen this process, this cycle happening with each of these developments of panic, fear, and anger from these groups that are getting, from these neighborhoods that are getting organized. I think if we were to have someone to say, this is your point of contact, they can direct you. As, if I were an economic, if I was the liaison to any one of these, my goal would certainly not be to attend all of these meetings, to tell Bob what he needed to do.
Memorize the plan.
To memorize, to understand the plans. My background's in marketing, I wouldn't be able to read half the plans. So, my goal would be simply to be accessible to the residents and say, okay, I hear your concern. I suggest you speak to this person who can help navigate it. The next day, were you able to reach that person? Did they answer your question?
Don't you do that today? I know you do. I know you do that, but...
But I think right now with, when you have these organized groups, and I think Eaton Lakeview has really set the bar pretty high as far as what an organized neighborhood is.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I think if they, I know they've been working with Barry, I know they've talked to me, I know some have talked to you, but I think having one person would just streamline it for the neighborhood, because otherwise, who are they supposed to reach out to? They can reach out to whoever they want.
And it could be the neighborhood group, or it could just be somebody who lives in that neighborhood that may or may not even belong to that. Say, listen, I, you know, I have a question on this, who do I go to? And then, okay, well, you know.
The benefit of having one person, too, is that you're more, you may be more familiar with the stages of a project than the average board member might be.
The people who are going to be most likely familiar with the project would be the people who attend the CPDC meetings or the ZVA meetings, you know, if they're the liaisons. Or if you have a general interest in that.
Or if you have a cup of coffee with the developer, or if you have a cup of coffee with somebody from the neighborhood. Look, I mean, this is what I do every day.
So the purpose of this, just to be clear, is not to become a selectman who's making decisions on the ground, not at all, or who's doing something that the ZVA falls under the ZVA's purview. I respect all those purviews and the town, and the town employees' purviews. I think we really want to avoid, however we write this, we want to avoid giving that impression.
And basically, if we call it a liaison assignment, it's not assigned until there's a reason to do so, right? Like, there's five of them right now, right, that are, you know, that are going to be happening.
Really, from like 40,000 feet or higher, a project is approved, there's two types of communication that I can imagine happening. Generally speaking, one is with town government or perhaps state government in a regulatory role. They have certain roles, the fire department has certain roles, the building inspector has certain roles, and so on. But the other is just more communication. And usually, town staff does not know the answers for communication. It's only the developer that knows. What is the developer going to do? Why did the developer do this? If it doesn't involve regulatory concerns we have, we don't know, and we wouldn't know. So I think it's important that you understand those two distinctions and try to figure out what are you trying to address both, which is fine, but they are different. The town is not routinely involved in communication unless it involves a regulatory role.
That's an interesting question. How would a nighttime board have better knowledge? Staff doesn't know that. I mean, we can be a conduit, but if it's a contentless conduit...
Down at the, you know, the train station, I keep forgetting it changes. Jean has made the point several times, she doesn't know what's going on. The developer needs to have a website, the developer needs to communicate with the neighbors.
But we made them do that.
When they ask her, she says, I don't know.
Right.
And so how are you going to know?
Well, and maybe that actually brings up a really good point, Bob, which is that there seems to be holes between some of these, right, between what the town is responsible for, what DEP is responsible for. What if we were to have something to explain the process? It doesn't have to be long, say, when a development comes in, whether it's a 40B, a 40R, or something else. This is the process that it's going to follow, generally speaking.
Yeah, I think we have that somewhere, don't we?
Does that exist somewhere?
I think we do.
I think we do. But, yeah, go through. It seems like, as you were talking about it, I've seen it, but I, you know, that's...
Well, I didn't even, I didn't even know it existed, so...
In fact, there's a marketing piece about how to develop in the downtown, how to get permits from...
I think Andrew, Andrew Costello, or Costello?
Corona.
Corona, okay.
But that's more for the development side of it, right? That's not for the resident, right?
It could be reference material for the steps that have to be done, maybe with some modification for the...
Make it resident-friendly, so that the, you know, I think that might be a nice approach.
This is really good. You've seen this?
Yeah.
This thing is excellent.
And you're so old.
And nobody knows it exists.
Right. It's how to do business in writing, and it could be from anyone's angle. A resident could read this and understand it.
Did the MAPC do that, too? Like, they help us with that, or?
No, it's, it's just an overview, a good overview.
That's what the DRT does.
Honestly.
Yep. Where's that, where do you find that?
It's under the planning department. There's a lot of good stuff under the planning. They like the plan.
Yeah.
All right. So, again, you know, is there, is there interest in doing, is there interest in pursuing this?
I think so.
There is for me.
Yeah. I have no interest in this.
I would not want to be the central point of contact, and I would like to see it handled a little more informally. But, I mean, I think back to Oak Street, we had a bunch of residents that came in during an office hour I was holding. They had some specific problems. They assigned a representative for the neighborhood, and that, that worked out pretty well.
And you wanted to do it because you took the call, the first call?
Uh, I happen to have office hours at that.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, the office hours were recording before every meeting, though, right? So, I mean, you've got that.
Right. This is a, these developments are really pretty long, and there's a lot of moving parts. So, my intent here was, anyway, people called, and they, they don't know who to go to, or where to start, or what the process is about. And it may be great to point to this, but...
Why don't we use office hours as a start for this stuff?
When I, when I brought it up, it was, it was more about when these projects start to be getting troubles in the ground. Because that's where a lot of those phone calls are going to happen. I didn't intend it to be, you know, a sub liaison group of the people who work at CP, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
So, just that. If it was, if it was, if it was sort of boiled down to that, would there be greater interest on your part, Dan, to look at something like that? John, you still don't know, I would imagine.
Well, I think it's government on top of government. I think we, I think we do this now. Is my, I agree that everything you said, Vanessa, is something that should be done. I think each of us have a responsibility to provide that. And I think that in general, we do. And so, to me, it's redundant, and the redundancy is layering in a policy. And as we already know, we have policies that can create, you know, confusion.
I don't envision this to be a policy. I just, like, this is just sort of a discussion piece to say, are we going to do this?
Who would make the first move here? Would it be them contacting us, or us contacting them?
I think it would, I think it would be them contacting us. I have no, I have no, you know, I have no interest in kind of saying, oh, do you know that there's going to be a neighborhood, you know, here in your neighborhood?
They do that now, so what's missing?
I think maybe that single point of contact, that they could be, you say, you know, if you don't know who to call, you can start off with Andy Friedman, if it's going to be Lincoln Street, or Dan Endsminger, if it's going to be, you know, Cool Street, and then...
Dan, to your point, I like the idea of having this be informal. John, I think you're right. We don't need a strict policy indicating the steps we need to take. But to your point of what's different regarding this policy over what we're doing now, as I've seen it, especially in the past six months, residents are frustrated. And if residents are frustrated, then perhaps this is an area where we can do better.
I think their frustration comes from a different source, personally. But, you know, I could, you know, I could be wrong about that. I think their frustration is there's a lot of change going on. Enormous amounts of change. You have a whole district of town that's been...
Change makes people fearful.
I suspect, we live in New England, you know, you know, people don't, people don't want to change their socks.
Listen, people are coming here.
I mean, they really, look, it's just something I've observed, is that, as a person that didn't grow up here, this is not a place that does well with change. And we have had a lot of things changing in Redding. And I think there is frustration. I think you sense it correctly. And I think we have to march through it, and, you know, let them know that we're here for them. I, I think that there, again, you know, you create certain risks when you start to segregate things. And that's my only concern with this. Not that it's a bad idea that we are information central to the public. We should be. I mean, I think everybody here strives to do that. I know I do, and I have every reason to believe that each of you do as well. We all have our own styles of how we do it. But, and it is our job. They elect us for this. It seems like we're reinventing something here that could run a certain risk. And it could run risk with staff, it could run risk with other volunteer boards, it could run risks with knowledge sources for, you know, citizens. And maybe what we have to work on instead is something you brought up a little earlier, that I think it surfaced recently. And that is, when somebody writes to all of us, we tend not to respond, because either Bob's going to respond, or he's moving it to the right place. And part of the problem is, occasionally, nobody figures out who's on first. You know, I mean, that happens. It's, it's human nature. So, maybe we need to work on a better communication system, rather than an all-points bullet kind of thing. I think that would be more positive. I think that I would be happy, I think each of us would be, if it, if we had demand for an hour before, you know, when it's our turn, you know, once every five meetings, and there's projects going on, we could, you know, let, on the town website, let it be known, or in the packet, that, you know, we realize that Lakeview's going on, you know, and we're going to be available. I just think that's a, I would prefer that approach, but that's just...
So, John, I really like your idea of discussing the communication strategy as far as when someone emails us, because if they email us, they may be expecting a response from one of us. And so, that, it almost feels like we're being negligent, or neglectful, perhaps, that we're ignoring them.
Well, there's a triage process.
By simply, but if someone is reaching out to us, you know, they expect a response from one of us. The town manager is perfectly capable of handling it, and might very well be the appropriate person to handle it. But they've reached out to us, our elected officials, and they're not hearing from us. So, I think that's a different issue that we can address.
Well, that's a good idea.
This goes, we could do a trial run and see how it goes. If it turns out that it's not working, that it's too complicated, that it's a burden on the staff, or have you...
All it simply really is in my mind, is just adding five sub liaison with a name on it.
Yes.
Right. And then, there it is for people to kind of...
I suggest you discuss this at your joint meeting with CPDC. They're the experts.
Okay.
See what they have for opinion and angle on all of this.
Well, some of this is after CPDC.
I understand, but they're involved in most of the projects, and then ZBA is really only in the controversial of problems.
Well, when they, after, after it gets passed, well, ZBA has some more information they took in.
Yeah. But I think that's a reasonable discussion, to get their feedback, see what they've been, I don't know if they...
I'm going to, I'm just going to cut the discussion on this, because I'm dying, number one. And number two, we have some stuff to do outside. So, I think this was great, you know, I, I think we're in the right direction. If anything, the takeaway from this is that, you know, the board cares, and, you know, we're out there and we're available. So, we'll follow up on more. Okay, so, do we have minutes, or no?
No.
No minutes, okay. So, is our...
So, emotion.
Damn, you always forget.
Ready to move, for executive? Move to adjourn to the executive session for the dual purposes of strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and strategy to discuss interests in real estate, where the acting chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to adjourn without returning to open session. That requires a roll call.
So, does that have to be seconded?
Yeah, I'll second.
Yeah. Mr. Halsey?
Yes.
Mr. Endsminger?
Yes.
Mr. Colorado?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Berman, yes. So, we are...
Okay, go next door.